Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter and for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair, seeing none. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-three signing of the Acts of two thousand twenty-three extending certain COVID-nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, subsection twenty, until March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public had adequately accessed the proceeding as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number one five zero eight nine four five four four one zero, conference ID two zero three three eight six four nine one pound, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast inside my class on channel eighteen, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First item on the agenda is the roll call to establish quorum. Select Board Member De Castro, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Present.
Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
Select Board Member Michelle.
Present.
And Select Board Members is present. We have, we'll have a set of minutes. We'll have our public announcements and agenda item request. I will get into the actual bulk of the agenda, but just a little FYI, the public hearing on the water rates will be postponed. We had a small posting error, so we will reschedule that for the appropriate date. We get some confirmation from staff when we can have it properly posted. Then we will get into our regular business agenda, which is a drinking water, testing and pumping update. And the public comment on business agenda, just note, I'm going to allow public comment on items A, B, E and F. The Water and Sewer Advisory Committee recommendations, the general obligation bond award vote, letter of support for ARPA funding and the housing items. C and D, which is committee appointments and some are scheduled traditionally are board member only conversations. So A, B, E and F, as each agenda item comes up, I will allow public comment on each of those agendas. And then we will convene the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for future discussion. So with all that said, I'm going to start with the minutes of May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion.
I will move the minutes of May twenty.
Second.
Okay. Corrections, omissions? None? Perfect. Select Board Member De Castro.
Abstain.
Select Board Member Davis.
Approve.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Select Board Member Michelle.
Aye.
And I say aye, approved, four zero one. All right. Public announcements and agenda item request. I'm going to actually start this off. I know we were off last week with interviews, so it's sad to share the news. We've had several passings recently. We had Paul Kelly, Norm Pacon and Ben Someski. All the three of these gentlemen have served the town in, you know, various ways on different committees and boards and public service. And it's, you know, it's great sadness to announce that they have all passed on over the last weekers. And I'd just like to take a moment of silence in recognition of these three fine gentlemen. All right. Thank you very much. Public announcements and agenda item from the board first. Anyone? None? Do we have any from staff?
No.
No? Viewing the audience in public, please. There was a gentleman who had a, yes, sir. Could you step up to the podium, please?
It's a matter which one? Oh, okay. My name is David Holden. I live at twenty-eight Barnhill Lane in Chatham. I'm the current Commodore of the Monomoy Yacht Club. And I'm here this evening to inform the board and the viewing public that this Saturday, June seventeenth, at ten o'clock in the morning, we will be, the Monomoy Yacht Club will be hosting our annual harbor update. There's no registration, pre-registration, no fee, but it's our opportunity to inform the public of the changes in our waterways that prior to getting into the full boating season. Stuart Smith, our Chatham Harbor Master, will be making a presentation. John Rendon, the Harbor Master from Harwich, as well as representation from Coast Guard Chatham, will be there to answer questions. Current aerial photographs will be presented, an opportunity to ask and answer questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Holden, where is it being held?
Chatham Community Center.
And at what time?
At ten o'clock.
Okay. Thank you.
Fifteen minutes early, there's coffee and refreshments available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the viewing audience at present tonight? Is there anyone online that has a public announcement or agenda item request?
I see no one online that wishes to make a request.
All right, fair enough. As I mentioned, item three, public hearing on the water rates and the public here on irrigation water meter charges is going to be postponed. So we're going to dive into item four, drinking water, testing and pumping update from our Public Works Director, Rob Farley, Bailey, Bailey. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll just provide a brief update on the drinking water projects and the pumping report for the town. Training field wells, five and eight, temporary treatment at well five. We backwashed it last month. PFAS testing came back non-detect. Temporary treatment for well five is up and running and it will be, remains out for the summer. The permanent treatment facility for wells five and eight, the state revolving fund construction loan application approval is in process. We are anticipating Weston and Sampson to submit a proposal for engineering services during construction. And we are about to begin the contractor pre-qualification process. This is required because anytime there's construction over ten million, the contractor needs to be pre-qualified. So following along in your agenda packet, Chatham Wells ten and eleven, that's coming along nicely. It's currently on schedule. Contractor Robert B. Hour completed the brick veneer installation of the windows. Interior work continues, painting. Plumbing will be ongoing. The water pumping comparison from May two thousand twenty-two as compared to May two thousand twenty-three is provided in the tables and charts that are enclosed in your packet. To summarize, we pumped almost fifty million gallons in May, which is fourteen point seven million gallons more than May two thousand and twenty-two, or approximately forty-two percent higher. Wells are running approximately ten to fourteen hours a day. That's about it, unless you have any questions.
Just a quick question, twelve to fourteen hours a day, what is that compared to about a year ago? Is that, we're right on pretty much, I know, pardon?
Yeah, I don't have that information.
Question, I know. I was just trying to think if that's pretty much on par with where we were last year or not.
This time last year, I'd have to look back in my notes. I don't have that.
Okay. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Rob. You know, as a Select Board Member, you can't help but be struck by the increase. Fourteen million, six hundred and seven, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred gallons, forty-two and a half percent increase. You know, I'm struck by the, that's a sizable increase. And we're pumping at fourteen, yet the other stuff we're going to talk about tonight is, we need to be concerned when it gets kind of north of seventeen, so.
Seventeen is kind of a critical point.
Okay, so, but I guess were we pumping around fourteen or thirteen or twelve last year, or were we pumping around fourteen?
Well, we weren't, we had the irrigation ban last year, so it's kind of hard to compare apples to apples, you know?
So, you know, at some point, you're going to hear our wanting to see something that was pre-COVID. I don't know. You know, I know we've had a lot of people move down here during the pandemic and yada, yada, but I'd like to get more of a baseline and, you know, because should my heart rate go up because I see almost forty, forty-three percent increase or not?
Well, if we look at the groundwater table from the observation wells, they were much higher pre-COVID. You know, two thousand, two thousand and twenty range, they were higher than they are now.
Yeah.
Observation wells are better than they were in the past two years.
Okay.
So, but we're not completely out of the woods, so to speak.
Yeah. Okay, well, I just want to be, obviously, to overstate the obvious, you want to be really mindful of it, and that increase is sizable in my mind from year over year.
All right, Ms. Davis?
Yeah, I just have a comment because I was going to ask the same questions and the idea of getting pre-COVID numbers makes a lot of sense. I'm just really concerned it's only May and we're seeing this increase. And if you're saying capacity is, you know, or we should be concerned at seventeen percent, I mean, yeah, seventeen, yeah, seventeen thousand, seven, yeah, whatever, seventeen, whatever, seventeen million gallons, or seventeen hours, sorry. Too many numbers this afternoon. I guess what I'm looking, what I'm wondering is, what is June looking like already? We're halfway through. Are we substantially higher again?
We're keeping an eye on it weekly and we'll really have to keep monitoring that. And if anything should really alert us, I think we'd bring it to the Select Board and the Town Manager's attention.
Okay. All right. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments from the board? Dean?
Yeah, I was struck by the increase as well because, as I recall, back in the prior month, we were still under, I think, what it was the prior, it was pretty close. And all of a sudden, there's a big jump in the month of May.
There is a big jump. I know the watering conservation restrictions were lifted around mid-April. And then, as the seasonal changes happened with people turning on their irrigation systems, I think it all kind of happened pretty much at the same time.
How is this measured? Is, are there, are there measuring devices on the wells that indicate how much is pumped out? Do we know?
There are flow meters on the, on the wells, yes.
And are they checked periodically for accuracy?
Every week, yes.
They're checked for accuracy?
Oh, for accuracy? I'm not sure what the frequency of the accuracy check is, no.
Be curious as to whether, you know, if this were on my house, I'd want to know if there was something wrong with the meter. If you had a big jump.
Tom, Tom Barr has his hand up. I don't know if he could answer, maybe possibly help answer that question?
Sure.
Tom?
Yes, how you doing? So, to answer Dean's question about the calibration, every year we have an annual calibration of all of our flow meters at every well. And that's done by a third party, Regan Supply. And so they come in, do a calibration, make sure everything's accurate. If there's anything off, they make the adjustments. So that is usually done in March, so these numbers that we're getting now are, are pretty accurate for May. And Rob's pretty much right. Once we lifted that ban, like took all the restrictions off, that's when we started to see the increase. I just took a quick peek at the June pumping comparison so far, and that is up about forty, I believe it was forty-six percent from last year in June. So it's just a lot more water being pumped. We're averaging about one point eight gallons a day at this time, which is much higher than what we were averaging last year.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Rob. Additional questions or comments from the board? Mike?
Yeah, I won't beat a dead horse here. It's obviously a source of concern, the June number, I think, reemphasizes that. When we look at this the next time, whether it's interim or whenever, I think we'd, I would like to know, to the extent it's possible, at what, what the, the, the usage is. If we can compare whether it's irrigation or residential or whatever meter information we can get that would, would give us some sense of where the increases are going, that would be helpful.
It's not, not as easy as a black and white, you know, take, take individual numbers. There are only so many registered irrigation meters. We can try to get a little bit of an idea that way, but it may not be, you know, a complete picture.
All right. Any questions from the viewing audience? I see one hand up. Helene?
Helene.
Helene Gibbs, please.
Yes, thank you very much. I have a couple of questions. With respect to Wells five and eight, you did indicate something about because of the ten million that you have to go out for. It requires certain filings. Have we already appropriated that ten million? That's the first question. And then what is the completion date now for five and eight where it's fully operational? And the same for ten and eleven? And have we appropriated all the money for that? When, I believe that ten, eleven were supposed to be fully operational by this fall. Is that date still holding?
That's correct, yes.
So they'll be, that, that will be added to our supply, obviously. And how much to those ten and eleven are they going to be able to pump?
About three, seven hundred and fifty gallons per minute combined.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And Wells, so five and eight is on schedule. We should be going out to bid late summer, early fall with a projected completion of two thousand and twenty-five. And again, we are, state revolving fund approval process is under work, so we expect to get state money for that as well.
Okay, but we, we may have to come up with some of that ten million ourselves, or is that going to be totally covered?
I believe it's nineteen point eight million is the total cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it was nineteen point eight, Rob. So what, just a quick question, what wells are pumping now that are, that are, we're using?
So one, two, three, the South Chatham Wells.
Yeah.
Well, four.
Four.
Well, five, six, seven and nine.
Thanks. Thanks.
Okay. Any questions from the audience who's present tonight? And no more hands up in the viewing audience, correct?
That's correct.
Correct. All right. Closing comments or thoughts from the board, or?
No, just, see how June goes.
Cheers. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. So again, like I mentioned, public comments, I'm going to allow on each of agenda items A, B, E and F. So we're going to dive right into our regular business agenda. We're just going to start with the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee recommendation. I will ask the Chair, Jeff Colby, to come up and kick this off for us, please.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Jeff Colby, the Chair of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. Got Bruce Bogdardis here as well. Spent a lot of time working on the matrix that we want to introduce to you tonight. Just a little bit of a background, and I think this is a very important topic, given what you've just heard from the DPW Director about the usage at our wells, but also we're in a drier period. In fact, we do expect that the state will indicate that we'll be in that higher level of drought very soon, unless we start to get more significant amounts of precipitation. We've had a little bit here and there, but it really hasn't been a significant, a good soaking rain that would help us out. But with that said, the Board of, the Select Board asked the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee to review the conservation and the restriction measures. We've done that. We spent a number of months over the last year looking at that, starting at the end of last summer, when we actually met in joint session with, with your board to review current measures and take, you know, additional steps as necessary. We looked at what other communities have done, the recommendations from DEP, and what the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee thought would be very helpful is to develop a tool in which the water commissioners yourself would be able to use going forward, kind of a policy framework, if you will, in the different categories, whether it's, you know, drought level one, two, three, four. Hopefully, we don't get to the significant extent that we did last year. But, you know, so even in those beginning levels, I think it's good for the community to have an idea of what could be coming up if we do hit certain triggers. Also on that top of the chart, and Bruce will go into much more depth in a moment, but the top of the chart, the important concept was triggers. And it's not just how dry it is and how we're stressing the aquifer, but it's also how much the wells are pumping. And I think that the board just asked our DPW Director about that. And so that's an important criteria as well. So we spent some time trying to nail down what the right criterias were for those items. And we thought it would be a really good opportunity to get feedback from the board if we're heading in the right direction in this regard. And so we put together this chart for you tonight. And so what I'd like to do is hand it over to Bruce at this point where he can kind of walk you through those various steps. I think you'll see a lot of similarities to the steps that you took last year in response to the various levels. We tried to incorporate that in this chart as well.
Thank you.
Bruce Bogdardis in the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. We took a look at the water conservation restrictions and the whole method around how it's communicated and how it's managed. And we really were looking for some standardization. Over the last few years, the, every time there was an announcement about a water restriction level change or whatever, the wordings were similar, but, but there wasn't a standard to it. So we were thinking that it could really be identifying the triggers, what triggers a specific level of restriction, and then having those restrictions be standard for that level. And whether you go up with a higher level, it should be the same, and coming back down should be the same. And we also drafted a, basically an announcement that would be a standard use announcement, which would include the chart that was there. We took a look at trying to understand what drove the restrictions. And if you take a look at the nice colorful chart, it basically is got five, four different, well, five different levels, levels zero, one, two, three and four, increasing in the number of severity. We wanted, the first thing that we took a look at was lawn watering is by far the biggest use of water. And so that was the first item up. And then lawn watering, I'm sorry, lawn watering originally was sprinklers or drip irrigation. And then lawn watering by handheld or by watering can. Shrubs and flower were up again, and then washing of vehicles, driveways, and then seasonal items. End of year power washing a boat to put things away, or springtime washing of outdoor furniture, or in the fall. We also wanted to make sure that there was clarity relative to the fines and the structure for the fines. So down the bottom, that is what we have now. First offense a warning, second offense a hundred dollars, and third offense is two hundred. Under each one of the, the levels of the drought. Under each one of the levels of the drought, we talked about how it would be identified, such as odd house numbers on Tuesdays, midnight to 7:00 AM to, to 7:00 AM, and from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, or strictly prohibited. The, the, this, what you're looking at is in agreement with what's in effect today, the fine structures, the different levels, but it's bringing some standardization to it. One of the things that we took a look at was also trying to get a better control on what else might go into this. So, we would come back at a later time to formally present, but we are looking at, the state right now is the one that identifies with this, are we in a drought condition, yes or no? And that's, that's what drives the levels. But we were also concerned about supply, not just from a state mandate, but from what happens if there's a gas truck turnover in South Chatham near the wells? And at the same time, a water main breaks? And at the same time, a well goes down? The state may say, boy, it's been raining cats and dogs, so we don't have a problem. But the town supply would certainly have a problem if that's the case. So, as you can see on the top of the chart, we were looking to include not just the Massachusetts EEA drought level, but also the town water supply. And we worked with Weston and Sampson, and the committee identified that we believe that it should be the number of hours, weekly average hours of pumping on town wells. So, on a, on a weekly basis, it gets measured, whether it's going up or down. And again, if it's less than 17 hours a day, we should be fine. If it's up over 20 hours, then we are in big trouble. So, that would be another way to drive it. And we would suggest that the level of drought would be based on whichever is higher, whether it's the state's call, or whether it's the local supply. The, to include the town supply, water supply, would require a bylaw change, because right now it only states that it is the state that gets to do it. We're looking to have it also, the Select Board, have the ability to identify that as We are also, we will come back to formally address, we believe that both public and private water supply should be included in the restriction area at some point. We're not saying that would be equal, but if we are in emergency drought conditions, we think that there should be a difference as to, the private well needs to have some kind of control on it as well. That is able to be done. The state says that it can be done. But again, it would require another change to the bylaw. So, it's not going to happen anytime soon, but that's what we're looking for, and standardization of the fines, and standardization of a communication going back out, basically, which would include this with preamble explaining why and what the town is looking for. But this would be our recommendation for a standard structure that people can hopefully understand as a standard.
Yeah. So, just to kind of sum up, the chart you have in your packet, you were looking at tonight is doable with regards to the bylaws that are currently in place. We are looking at fines as well as private wells, and how those might be able to incorporate it into this in the future, but that would be a future bylaw change, which we would like to come back before you to talk about. But this is something you have before you tonight that can be incorporated in the short term, as we're heading into this, you know, high-usage water season. And happy to answer any questions the Board might have.
All right. Thank you for presentation. I'm going to recognize Dr. Duncanson, but he has his hand up, but that might be beneficial for us before we go into deliberations. Dr. Duncanson, please.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make the Board, as well as the members of the public, aware that just this afternoon, the State of Massachusetts did elevate the drought status of Cape Cod, indicating that we are now in a Level 1 mild drought for Cape Cod. And that was just as of late this afternoon.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the Board? Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm the liaison for this Board to the Water and Sewer Committee, and I greatly appreciate the work that was done by the committee and the subcommittee that Bruce and Bill Cook served on. I have a multitude of comments and questions, but I feel somewhat restricted, because I'm the owner of a private well, and I would like to comment on private wells. I know the number of private wells. I saw something in the materials that we have as many as 500, we think, or?
It's probably in that neighborhood.
Yeah. I don't know if it's 10% of the population or not. I'm talking about the conflict of interest law. And I, it's my understanding that we may have a majority of the Board who have private wells, and we might have to invoke the rule of necessity, which I'm prepared to initiate if that's, because I'd like to comment on private wells.
I think for disclosure, I mean, I also have a private well. I mean, if we're going to get into the weeds of the private well, that's, that's fine. I mean, so I am, you have two, there's two on the Board as of right now, and we can invoke that without any hesitation. I wouldn't hesitate to invoke that.
So, there it is.
So, we could have, so we could have this dialogue.
So, I think we have?
I think we have to.
Are there three?
Yeah, I also have private wells.
So, that's three. If we were disqualified, we wouldn't even have a quorum of the Board tonight.
So, then let's.
I'd like, I'd like to move that we invoke the rule of necessity, so as to allow full comment by Board members on the subject of private wells.
I'll second.
Okay. Second? Dean?
Aye.
Jereen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have a full discussion on it now.
Thank you. I'll defer the comment on private wells for a moment, but I guess what I, my initial reaction, and I didn't really voice this at the committee level, because I really wanted, we sent this to you, so we wanted your input, and you worked on it at multiple meetings. So, I, I just, I'm concerned about driving this into a bylaw, because bylaws are not easily changed. And as things stand now, this Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners has considerable flexibility to adapt to changing situations. And I would like to think of the matrix and the associated material as a, as a strong guidance for the Board, as we make our determinations, rather than have it as a dictate, which I think would be the case if we were to have a bylaw, have this codified. I think it's a very rational scheme. I think that the, last night, we were sent an email by a citizen forwarding the Yarmouth policy, which you're obviously very familiar with, Jeff. And the email indicated a sense that the Yarmouth, the Yarmouth scheme was a little more flexible. It allowed, it was more generous in allowing usage of water for, for gardening or for other uses on different days of the week, which we've done here. And I, I'd like to, I don't know, I don't remember if you're, Bruce, if you, your committee looked at Yarmouth or other, I know you looked at some other towns.
Definitely, yes.
Yeah. And, yeah. And it might be worth, you know, giving a little more attention to it, in light of the comment that was made to us. I suspect we're going to hear from that citizen tonight. I want, on private wells, here's my comment about it. And last year, when we imposed the restrictions, even though I have a private well, I honored the town's restrictions. I just thought I should do that, to the significant detriment of my own lawn, but that's okay. But people invest significant resources into constructing a private well, and it's a great investment. And in fact, the construction of private wells was effectively encouraged by the town, by the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, previously, in previous years, to take people off the public water supply. And Dr. Duncanson has on several occasions over the years, and you can correct me if I'm misrepresenting, has said that private wells draw from a higher level, a higher stratum of the aquifer than the town wells, which are much deeper. So, I look at all of that and say, okay, if there's a lot of water in the aquifer, and we know that these, these test wells show declining levels, but at the same time, if there's a lot of water in the aquifer, and it's not the private wells that are really the problem, if they're drawing from a different level, a different stratum of, of the aquifer. And I don't know that we should apply the same restrictions to private wells that we do to, to public wells. They're not, they're not drawing treated water, and that's part of the problem with the irrigation systems that draw from the town water system, because we're treating water, and then it's just being poured out onto lawns. So, I have a little bit of concern, I know you're not proposing that tonight, you indicate that's something for the future, that if we go into a bylaw. But I, I'm a little bit nervous about telling people who have private wells that, you know, they have, they're prohibited from watering in certain circumstances, certain situations. The last comment I want to make is that, and I admit I have not examined this, can't the Select Board, can't the Water and Sewer Commissioners on our own right now, if we felt that there were, that our pumps were being overused, going, going for too many hours? Can't we just use that as a basis for imposing conservation restrictions? Or do we have to have codified in the bylaws? I think it was suggested by, I think Bruce, I think you said it. Have we, have we examined that issue with Town Council? Do we have to have a declaration of an emergency? Or can't we just on our own say, okay, we have a local emergency, as it were, because we're pumping too much, and we're going to impose restrictions? Do you know the answer? Have we checked with Town Council?
That's something we probably need to review with Town Council, but I believe you do have that authority if your system is in.
I haven't looked at the.
Is in a critical state, absolutely.
I haven't looked at the statute. I mean, maybe it does require a bylaw change, maybe, Bruce, that's what you're talking about, because it's not referred to there.
Dr. Duncanson might have a better answer on that, because I believe he did talk to the Town Council as we were going through this, this effort. And I think that's where it came from.
Dr. Duncanson?
Yeah. The Board, the Board can, under the existing bylaw, the Board does have the ability to declare a state of water supply conservation. You already have that, and it talks about that a shortage of water exists and conservation measures are appropriate. Doesn't necessarily indicate why there's that shortage of, of water, so it either could be drought-related, or, as we've talked about, you know, last summer and all, it could be related to infrastructure issues. And, you know, Town Council in conversations did indicate that the Board, or the town, could include private well users if they wanted to. That would require a change to the current bylaw.
Yeah. He, he did say, under state, state law, you could, I think I asked that.
Right.
I was the one that asked the question. Bob, these, these two test wells, the one in Brewster and the one in Chatham, what are they testing? Are they testing the public water levels, or are they testing the upper stratum? Or are they testing both?
No, they are, they are, they're not, they're not test wells, they're groundwater monitoring wells, and they are monitoring the groundwater levels, irrespective of whether it's, you know, it's the aquifer as a whole, if you will, as opposed to, say, the upper stratum or the lower stratum. Generally, they're deep enough that they're really measuring the deeper portion where public water supply wells are usually drawing from. Because you have to understand, in a, in a community, there may or may not be, you know, kind of an upper aquifer and a lower aquifer, depending on the geology. In some areas of the Cape, it's sand all the way from the ground surface to bedrock. In other areas, there are confining layers, generally a layer of clay, that kind of separates that upper aquifer from the lower aquifer physically, if you will. So, you know, private wells generally will be drawing from the upper portion of the aquifer, because they tend to be shallow, because it's more expensive to go deeper. Public water supply wells, because they're drawing, you know, larger volumes, a million gallons a day, you want those deep enough where you're not potentially going to run out of water, either because water levels are dropping naturally in a drought, or because you're pumping a lot of water out at any one time. So, that's generally the distinction between a private well and a public well, is the depth based on primarily how much water you're pumping out. But in some areas, like I say, you know, underneath the Chatham Airport, there is a clay layer. It's at an angle. And so, in some areas, there is a, that physical separation between the upper aquifer and the lower. But that's not uniform throughout Chatham, and it's not uniform throughout the Cape.
Bob, did you, I think you've said in the past that you thought that private wells, the impact of private wells on water usage in Chatham is relatively minimal. Is that correct?
Yeah. When you, when you, yes. When you look at it, that the town of Chatham has multiple public water supply wells that are pumping, you know, several million gallons a day out of the aquifer. You know, we have, we have a number of wells that, you know, individually can pump a million gallons a day. And so, you know, right now, we have nine wells. Granted, we're not really using well number four or well number eight. So, you know, right now, the town probably has a capacity to pump about 6 million gallons a day out of the ground to the public water supply. When you look at private wells, you know, that might be pumping, you know, tens or hundreds of gallons out of the aquifer a day, you know, even if you said we had 500 of those, you know, at 100 gallons a day, you know, you're still not getting up to the kind of volumes that the public water supply wells are drawing. So, you know, that's why I've said that, you know, the amount of water from private wells, you know, it's not insignificant, but it's substantially different in volume compared to public water supply wells. And I think, you know, from my own perspective, the reason why we've been having this discussion about including private wells in some manner in the restrictions, is, you know, what we always hear in, in not only water pumping, but other issues in town, is the fairness issue. You know, just because somebody is able to afford to put in a private well, and, you know, their neighbor next door may not be able to, you know, why should we allow someone who simply has the fiscal means to be able to do it? Why shouldn't they, if you will, bear some of the same pain that everybody else has to bear when we get into these situations? You know, and we hear the same conversation. You know, and, and we hear the same conversation with other topics, too. Housing and, you know, everything else.
That's more of a moral and philosophical argument rather than an evidence-based argument, to me.
Absolutely.
Is it fair to say, on the other, the other side of the coin, because I've heard this, in some, in some cases, it's not possible to, to have a private well, or it's exorbitantly expensive to do it? Is that true in certain parts of town, you think?
Yes, that is, that is the case. You know, generally, you want the well to be 100, although, you know, for a potable water well, we'd be looking at 100 feet from a septic system. That's not as critical with a, you know, with simply a well for irrigation. But there are some, are some areas in town where, you know, there may be that clay layer that's too thick to get through, you know, without it being exorbitantly expensive for, you know, for a homeowner. You know, in many respects, putting in a private well has advantages. You know, if you site the well downstream of your septic system, not only are you not using treated water that the taxpayer is paying to pump out and treat, but you're also kind of recirculating some of those nutrients that, you know, you're putting into the ground through your septic system, and putting it back on vegetation, and that's a good thing. So, you know, there, there are advantages to private wells beyond just taking some of the strain off the public system. And, you know, I, I mean, as a scientist, you know, I look at public water as something that we have to pump out of the ground, we have to treat it to meet all kinds of federal and state regulations for potable water purposes, and then we turn around and, you know, put that water on the ground to water the lawn. And to me, that just makes no fiscal sense, if you will.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the, I'm, the indulgence that my colleagues have given me for, with this multitude of questions. I do want to just conclude by saying I, I very much appreciate the effort of the, the committee to try to address two issues that, you know, came up over the course of the last couple of years at this board. And one was fairness, and the other was confusion. And I, I think you've done that in each case, even though I might have some differences here and there. But thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Other additional comments for the board? Shereen, please.
Thank you. Corey, as I look at this, I, I, this is, for me, a very helpful document. I'm really glad that you have put it together. And I appreciate that some of the, oops, I have feedback from the speaker here, and I have to do this a certain way, I've been told. Okay. Anyway, just a couple of comments that I had about what I saw as really helpful and informative, is the idea that you had mentioned was standard use announcements that would go out to the public, and having this as a form would help better inform the public. I think that water conservation, no matter what, you know, we need to be mindful of, you know, the stress on our supply system, our supply, but also on our system itself. So the idea of doing the 17-hour, 18-hour, 19-hour, 20-hour, I'm calling town water supply pumpage factor, you know, is also helpful. I, I mean, just looking at our last water report we had five, 10 minutes ago, and, and, and this really, this threshold helps inform me. What I, what I do understand and learning about, you know, watering lawns and things like that, the, the once-per-week restrictions that you see at two and three, I find that to be perfectly fine, because, you know, lawns don't need to be watered as often as people water them, obviously. Maybe irrigation, people might want to tell you differently, or if you've had, you know, lawns that don't have deep-rooted seeded systems, then, then that could be problematic. But that's your expense. I think people need to understand about what kinds of grasses really grow well on the Cape. But I'm really happy to see this, and I think this, we could adopt this as a matter of policy for the, as, for the select board. And, you know, I, I, as Dean said, this is, this has really been helpful for us in a time when we were going back and forth with a lot of what should we be doing-isms. So, thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, thank you. Thanks to you guys. Thanks to the subcommittee and for the, all the hard work. You've had a lot of thought. You know, you, we've had kind of a trial run during the past couple of years, you know, kind of trial by fire, if you will. And I think this codifies what, some of what we did, a lot of what we did, kind of by us, by feeling our way along, if you will. I was, I, I also echo, I like the, the level one or 17 hours. I mean, I think using the, the hours of pumpage, or gallons per day, or hours of pumping, I should say, is an important metric, an, an, an index, if you will, on how we're doing. If it takes us, you know, 20 hours a day to get what it is we need, then we're in trouble whether or not a, a drought has been declared. Although perhaps, based on your study, a drought would likely have been declared. So I'm assuming there's some nexus between the amount of pumpage and kind of what we thought the levels would be for, for drought. And I also do not mind the, the two days per week during mild, and then one day a week for lawns, and then for the, a significant droughty into a critical drought. And then I have definite feelings on, if we're in emergency drought, I, I would opine, it's my opinion, that all should share with that, private, private well owners and those folks that use public water as well. I think if we're in emergency drought, then, you know, getting wa, potable water for humans, you know, whether it's jumped down through the, drawn through the, the public system, or not pumped through a, a private well, I think is most important versus keeping even plants alive or, or lawns alive. So, and I would, I echo Selectman, a Select Board member, Nacastro, that would like to avoid a bylaw change, because for his very fact, for his very fact, that they're very difficult to change. I think we can get, I think we can use this as a guideline for the Select Board very effectively going forward. And then, the only other comment I have is, again, if we get to the point where we're emergency drought, and we have somebody really being a scofflaw, I, I don't mind finding them more, to be honest with you. I think 100 and 200 and that, you, you can kind of gradate it out. If someone's really being a ding-dong when we have an emergency drought, then, you know, we should find the heck out of them. I don't, I don't hesitate doing that, or suggesting that. If that's, you know, and it, and when we get to that point, it is all for one. I mean, you know, we should all be doing what we can to protect the water resource of the community. So anyway, those are my, those are my comments. I think you guys did a great job, and I, I, yeah, I prefer the avenue of kind of going, this is a regulation that, that we can put in effect, or not, as the case may be, rather than, rather than going to town meeting for a bylaw change. Thank you very much. Thanks for your efforts.
Mike?
Thank you. Let me start by saying I, I, I agree. This is a tough, tough job, tough problem. A lot of features of, of complexity to it, and I very much appreciate the work you've done on it, set the table on the issue. Let me move next to say, you know, seeking the things that we can agree on. I, I agree with my colleagues here that I think flexibility is, is probably more desirable than a bylaw rigidity, which not only is difficult to change once you have it, but it raises questions about application or administration or enforcement. And I, I don't, this is not a problem that admits of, of sort of easy line drawing and, and, you know, you just, you're in this box and this is the way it is. I think flexibility is a, is a, is a positive feature. And by the way, I, I want to also mention, as I raise my hand, I, I do have a, a private well, and so in that sense, I, I have a conflict. I, I think that the way I think about this issue in the beginning is, number one, the town water supply, the town infrastructure, what, what, the, the first order of business is to protect the town pumped, if you will, water supply and the infrastructure that, that, that does that work. And I actually, in preparation for this, did go back and take a fast look at work that was done also, I gather, I guess about five or six years ago, by the Economic Development Committee, which perhaps was supportive of or part of the recommendation that somebody referred to, which was an encouragement on the part of town officially to, to get people to put in private wells and take the, some of the stress off of the, the public, public system. You know, I, that to me is something that, that makes sense, subject to a couple of considerations. The first consideration is, I'm just not clear on, I, I appreciate the comments that, that Dr. Duncanson shared with us as, as to the, not stress, but just who's pulling how much on the, on the, the total water supply in the aquifer, not only as against the town, but also as against the entire Cape. And that's, that's a factor, obviously, that has to be taken into consideration. I, I don't know what the data is there, and I'm not sure I've heard it anywhere. I, I think we at least have some, need to have some sense of what, what the data are, so that we can actually rationalize for private well owners what, what, whatever regulation we ultimately decide we want to put in place, if any. And, and I, I appreciate the comments on fairness. I, I think, you know, it, it, it's, we, we don't necessarily have to treat everybody exactly the same if they're in a, in a, in a, in a different position, namely, they've invested in a, in a private well and are contributing some benefit as a result of that. I'm not saying that gets you a get-out-of-jail-free card, but I do think that is something that has to be taken into consideration as you, as you, as you think about it and, and potentially regulate. I, I, you know, I don't know whether it's a perfect analogy, but there are financing support features for people who are being required to hook up to the sewer. And to me, that's, that's a, that's a resolution that I'm, I'm more comfortable with than saying that, you know, we're just going to treat everybody the same and, and regulate the same, even though they're, they're, they're in a different position. I, the, the last point I'll just simply make is, and this goes to what Jeff was saying, I, I hear from a lot of people who say, well, you know, I mean, there's that guy over there, I see him all the time, running his irrigation, and, and I'm, I'm just not going to comply. You know, let him come get me. I, I, I'm not, obviously not in favor of that, but I do think that whatever we come up with and however we administer it and enforce it, has to be something that people understand and, and accept and do their best to comply with, as opposed to encouraging people to just go off on their own. And, and that's not an easy problem. I'm not suggesting it is. It's, it's, it's a tough problem, but I think it's got to be addressed. So those generally are my comments at this point.
Well, first and foremost, I want to thank you very much for your time and effort on this. That is, that has to be recognized, because it's always tough to kind of put these things together and present them to the public for review and scrutiny. I, I am on board with, you know, kind of the general consensus, you know, this going in a bylaw route, not something I'm looking to support, but I am very confident that we can use this to kind of take action. We, we, if we wanted to take action on this pretty next week, but under certain circumstances, we have that authority. It's, it's structured that we have that actionability. So that is comforting, that we are not hand-tied, that we could take action immediately. You know, as far as the well goes, I mean, I'll, yes, I have a well. It wasn't I had a, a lot of extra money kicking around. I, you know, we looked at the extra cost of having to add the extra meter and the extra fees and everything, and I'm not leaving my house anytime soon. So I thought in the long term, it'd be wiser for me to put the well in, along with the philosophical component of, you know, taking town-treated water and watering a lawn didn't make sense. So philosophically and just long-term economics, it was kind of what drove us to do what we did for our lawn. And it grows, and I don't get ahead of mowing it all the time, so we stick out like the sore thumb in the neighborhood, but that's a long story in itself. I do have one question on some of the proposals, specifically with the irrigation, whether it be private or public. A lot of irrigation systems are put in, and they're put in and ma, you know, set up and blown out through a professional service. A lot of homeowners probably have no idea how to set it. So, as these things change, if, if we were to implement certain changes, was there any discussion or feedback or comments of being, you know, property X has to change it right away? It's, it, it could take a professional service so much time to hit all their accounts. Or there could be people that don't res, you know, it's a rental property, and maybe there's a real estate agent caretaker or something. So some of these things aren't going to be overnight actions on the, on the actual property, because the person who's residing in the house may or may not have any idea of how to reset the system for changing of dates and times and anything else. I mean, they can turn it on and off, but was there any discussion or concept about how to handle that? Because that has to take some consideration of how quickly some of the response would be.
No, we did not talk about that specifically, but our assumption is that a homeowner would be in control of their irrigation system, one way or the other, either through a professional or by themselves. We certainly didn't expect it to be, oh, the announcement came out at nine o'clock Monday morning, and by 12 o'clock, everybody's covered. No.
But, you know, Joe, Joe irrigation guy's going to get a phone call from, you know, 17 of his accounts, and he's, all of a sudden, he's scrambling around trying to readjust everything. So I was just wondering the dynamics of that. So, no, I, I, again, thank you very much for your work. I'm going to actually open it up to comments from the public, and then I'm, oh, is there a question for the board before I go to the public?
Yes.
Okay.
Mike is first.
Okay, Mike, then Dean, and then I'm going to go to the public.
Yeah, I, I don't want to extend this unduly on the board's side, but with respect to your, your comment, sort of triggered this for me. You know, it's not only the cost of a, of a, a meter and so forth with the town water, over some period of time, and, and I don't know what it is today, but I know once upon a time, it was three or four years, savings on the cost of the water will pay for your will, well. So it, it's not as if, I mean, it, 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 it makes economic sense, apart from not putting treated water on your, on your lawn or your, your flowers or whatever, to have a private well.
Dean? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask a question. I, Bruce, I guess this goes to you, and on, on the, on the matrix, in the first column to the left on the second entry, you have public water. So when I saw this, and I mentioned this to Jeff yesterday, I wondered, is, is this because, this is sort of the first phase of what you were planning, and you would reach private wells down the line?
Yeah, the draft going into the future, the next line would be lawn watering, private wells.
Okay. And the other thing I wanted to mention, you, you referred to the communication announcement that you put together. I don't think the rest of the board has seen that.
Okay.
Probably would be helpful for our information if you wanted to have that sent to us.
I've got some copies of it.
You actually did a bylaw draft, too, didn't you, now?
Correct.
Yeah, so if you have a chance, because you, you, as everybody knows, you put a lot of time in this, and I think that would benefit us to see everything you did. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Want to go to the public? We have several hands up. We have.
So we have Dr. Duncanson.
All right, Doc, okay, Dr. Duncanson.
Elaine Gibbs and Gloria Freeman.
All right, so Dr. Duncanson first, please.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to indicate for the board and for the public, the discussion that started a number of years ago about putting in private wells, that was not at the time driven so much by the water supply issue. It was really driven by the wastewater program, because, as you know, you get charged for wastewater based on your water bill. And so we encourage, we were, we still are encouraging people to put in private wells so they don't get charged on the sewer rates for water that they basically put on the lawn. So that was the impetus, probably seven, eight years ago, for starting that, you know, that suggestion to people, that, you know, if you wanted to have an irrigation system, you can save yourself money by putting in a private well, because then you don't have to pay for sewer based on the water use. So that's, that's really what started it. And then obviously, the last couple of years, with the drought situation, you know, that has just given us more reasons to encourage people, and as well, the issue of, you know, not putting treated water on the lawn. And that's, that's really the third kind of leg in that stool. So I just wanted the board to kind of add that background as to why that conversation originally started.
Great, thank you. Elaine Gibbs, please.
I believe Gloria was, her hand was up before mine. I can wait until she speaks.
Okay, Ms. Gloria, please.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Gloria Freeman. I'm, I'm speaking to you about the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee recommendation. Sewer Advisory Committee recommendation for proposed matrix of water restrictions that is the first step in amending the general bylaws in regard to a declaration of water supply emergency, an obviously critical issue for all of us. My email was referred to asking you to compare what is before you Chatham's proposed policy to the Town of Yarmouth's water conservation policy. Yarmouth is simpler to follow, is considerably less restrictive, and clearly denotes when outdoor water use for boats, vegetable gardens, and pressure washing are permitted, all of which are missing from Chatham's matrix. If you follow the various drought levels on both matrices that correspond to the Massachusetts Drought Management Task Force levels, you will see far less restrictive measures in Yarmouth's matrix than the one you've been asked to review and approve as the first step in amending the bylaw, or perhaps not in amending the bylaw at all. For example, an odd even restriction allows use of in ground irrigation systems in the Yarmouth matrix, as do the maximum two day per week restriction and the maximum one day per week restriction. Flower beds, shrubs, and vegetable gardens may be watered at any time except, of course, at critical or emergency drought levels. And restricted activity is also offered for mild and significant drought levels rather than prohibition. Also, the hours are more flexible. Yarmouth allows watering before 9:00 AM rather than before 7:00 in Chatham. So I'm hoping you will consider asking the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee to look at the Yarmouth document before moving forward and maybe apply regulations that are far stricter than any other town on the Cape and perhaps in the state if our infrastructure is lacking to provide sufficient water to townspeople. I hope you will encourage more wells and additional storage capacity as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Ms. Gibbs.
Yes, thank you. If I understood correctly in the opening statement, I'm not sure how you could have determined that the washing of vehicles, driveway sidewalks, decks, housing, and outdoor furniture are actually the culprit and therefore prohibited at level two. And what you're also silent on here, although you talk about seasonal fall power washing and engine washing is permitted, you don't say that it's prohibited for pleasure boats under level two after a day of boating. So I I, once again, I think there's an inequity here that people can take their boats out on a daily basis and come in after a day at the beach, and washed out marinas can use unlimited water. But we cannot take care of our sidewalks that are building up lichen and stuff, which is dangerous, and off our clabberd when it is detrimental and can do permanent damage. I also have a concern. I think the actual culprit is the fact that right now, 1,509 properties are registered with the town as using town water. But it also says that only 626 have put in a second meter, which leaves 900 that have either put in a private well, which they should have permits for, or they're not registered. And I think we can also assume that that 1,500 number is very low. I would suggest that it's probably closer to 3,000 that have irrigation systems in town, based on the number of properties going on. So I don't understand why that isn't your target. I would say that those irrigation systems, the 1,500 or the 3,000 that are currently not hooked up to a second meter are the ones that are using all the water. And back in 2018 or 19, they were told that no one that you had to register with the town, and you had to put in a second meter. And if you didn't, there were going to be penalties. And yet, nothing has been done about that. And even in the memo that was going to be for the public hearing, it said if all registered irrigation systems decided to have a second meter installed, well, it's not their decision. They were mandated to do it four years ago now, and they still haven't. And that I believe that is where the increase in the water usage of town treated water is occurring. And yet there's no penalties, and they're not even paying for a second meter or installation of a well. And if you have that data, I think that this in this matrix, what's missing is that that has to occur, and there will be fines if you do not go according to the regulations that were put in place four or five years ago. That's a tremendous amount of water that's being used. So I would hope that that's what you look at instead. And again, I believe that it's important to have equity here. You know, boating is great. But our properties, in terms of maintaining them and not allowing them to deteriorate, is too. And there has to be equity. And the people who have gone to the expense of putting in private wells because we were told to, there should be permits on file where that has occurred. And then anybody else who has an irrigation system and is using water has got to follow the rules, or there should be fines for it. That's the way we're going to get a handle on it. And anything short of that is is inappropriate. And I would hope that I would agree with Ms. Freeman, that the 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 matrix I saw from Yarmouth is much less complicated. It is much more equitable. And I think it's something that should be looked at. It would be easier for everyone to understand. And again, we have so many seasonal properties that I think that unless something goes out to every homeowner, regardless of whether or not you think they're on a well, telling them what the laws are, what the regulations are in terms of a second meter, and what the penalties will be should it be discovered, would get more people to comply. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Any additional questions or comments from the viewing audience? No hands? Anyone from the, yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify a couple of points. So currently, out of the 626 irrigation meters being charged a quarterly rate, there are another 51 households that have meters that have not been charged yet. And there are another 255 households waiting for contractors to install their meters. They've been purchased. So 932 is really the the actual number of the people that are complying with with the rules. I think we are gaining momentum. It's just it doesn't happen overnight. I also, if I am allowed, I would like to mention that under the Water Supply Emergency Bylaw, Section 261-4, Declaration of State Water Supply Conservation, the Town of Chatham, through its Board of Water Commissioners, may declare a state of water supply conservation upon a determination by majority vote of the board that a shortage of water exists and conservation members measures, sorry, are appropriate to ensure an adequate supply of water to all consumers. And really, and it goes on, but it really just requires that you put a notice in the paper. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll bring it back to the board for additional comments or actions. Thoughts? Dean.
Yeah, I mean, from the first item we had on water tonight, it's it was really a very compelling piece of data. And we're into, we're almost halfway into the month of June. So we need to be prepared in case we have to do something. The Water and Sewer Advisory Committee next meets in July. Is that right?
Correct.
Your scheduled meeting would be the second Monday?
July 10th is our next schedule.
Yeah. So and that's probably a little too far off. Although, I guess we could live with that if we want to suggest that they take another look at this and tweak it a little bit in light of the comments tonight, if that's the sentiment of the board. I'd like to have something in front of us as to use the word I used earlier, and I think others have used it as a guide for ourselves. But I think there've been some good comments tonight. I think I understand it a little better than I did, sitting through multiple meetings of the Water Committee and going through this, because it is a complicated subject, which we're trying to simplify for the public. But I think we bottom line is, I think we should, somebody should take a look at this matrix and see if it might be susceptible to some fine tuning and brought back to.
So is this a motion to send it back for review and for them to consider?
I guess I'll wait to see what other members of the board have to say.
Mike.
Yeah, I would endorse that. I want to specifically say that I, to be honest with you, I have not studied the submission that Ms. Freeman made with the the Yarmouth Program Matrix, whatever it is. And I guess I would ask that part of that review that we're asking you to do would include a pretty careful look at what they're doing and some preparation to give us a basis to understand why what we have in front of us or some variation on this theme is better suited to Chatham.
Shereen.
I'm fine with this going back to the board, but I am, I mean, to the Water and Sewer Commission, the advisory board. What I am concerned about is what Dr. Duncan said earlier, is that the state has just declared a level one drought for for Cape Cod. And so I think that we should be mindful of that with and talk about what we're going to do in the next at the next meeting or something, have an agenda item to talk about, whether we place some restrictions on 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 the town based on what what has been found.
We could certainly on a weekly or every meeting agenda, have a drought status, you know, an actual review, because we can act on it at that meeting.
Okay.
So I have no problem putting that on our agenda moving forward on a weekly basis. So we have that opportunity if necessary.
I just don't want to get bogged down with referring everything back and forth.
Nope.
It's just we dragged ourselves last year. And I myself think this is a good guideline for us to, as a soft guideline, to even consider if we're going to take any actions next week.
Good. Jeff?
Yeah, exactly, Shereen. Thank you. If in the interim, we remand the the matrix, the formal matrix back for some fine tuning with a Yarmouth overview, if you will, we still have this as a guideline in the interim, should we need it.
Right.
So I think we have a very good tool right now, if you will. So, you know, we can remand it back. I don't want to get mired in, you know, bureaucracy and committee isms forever. I mean, you want to bring it back and have, you know, a formal guideline, hopefully by next meeting or thereafter, after these guys after these guys meet next.
All right, final comment?
I'll offer a motion.
Please.
Sort of combines.
Bruce had it.
Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, Bruce.
Bruce had it. Yeah, the committee actually started out with Yarmouth Matrix. And we were looking to be more specific and and clear. The yes, the Yarmouth approach is more flexible. It's it's clearly simpler. But we thought we wanted to go and get specifics so that there really was no confusion.
Mr. Chair, if I could elaborate a little bit, as was mentioned before, I'm intimately familiar with the Yarmouth Matrix. And the reason for these, these are complex systems. That was mentioned tonight as well, operating a water system, very complex. The Yarmouth system is is very different. There's 24 wells. There's 100% more capacity in the stand pipes than than we have in Chatham. The drain on the system in the mornings, specifically for people getting ready to work, or irrigation is much more significant. So these times here in this matrix, specifically for restrictions, are tailored to the Chatham system. The Yarmouth one is tailored to the Yarmouth system. Every system is very different. And so these are Chatham specific. It's it's not Yarmouth. It's not as simple as cut and paste. You have to do a very detailed analysis of the strain on your system, and when is the best time to try to provide some relief to that strain. And that's what this matrix for Chatham shows.
Okay. Dean? Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Jeff. I'll offer the motion that it's twofold. We refer this back to the committee for some fine tuning in light of the conversation tonight and take, given even given what the chair just said, take another look at some of the Yarmouth provisions and see if this merits some fine tuning and report back to us. And you can do that at your regularly scheduled meeting on the on the 12th, I'm sorry, on the 10th of July. And in the meantime, as a second part of the motion to include, as you suggested, Shereen and Mr. Chairman, a review of the water situation at our next meeting, given that the state has declared a level one drought, in case we want to take some actions. And we do have this in front of us as a draft document.
Very reasonable.
So that's kind of long winded, but it's a motion in twofold to refer to back to the committee and to have this on our agenda for next week.
All right. So we have a motion. I have a second.
I'll second it.
Second? Okay. Slutman, Ashro?
Aye.
LeCorvus Davis?
Aye.
Premier Member Dykens?
Aye.
Rochelle?
Aye.
And I say aye. Thank you guys very, very much.
Thanks a lot, you guys.
Great, thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is the General Obligation Bond Award vote. Our Finance Director, Alex Halela, is online.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. Yes, tonight before you, and we have the General Obligation Bond Award. We had gone out for bid for $8 million in general obligation bonds for various projects for which we've already expended the funds. These are funds that for the stormwater and wastewater are not eligible for the Clean Water Trust. So we have to issue the general obligation bonds. We did go out for bid, as I said, for $8 million. And we received the bids came in, and they're noted in your packet. So we are recommending awarding it to Fidelity Capital Markets for the amount of $7,455,000. And the difference is that we received a bond premium on the bond sale of $672,540, which reduces the amount that we have to repay over the for the principal of the bonds. And just to note that in your packet, when we had prepared this, that the vote to award does state 8 million, it should state $7,455,000 rather than that. There's quite a few, a lot of information in your packet tonight. You do not have to read the entire vote of the Board of Slutman. As long as you have referred to it, it is in your packet. Because again, that's quite a lengthy vote. Let's see, what else do I want to say about this? Again, for wastewater, stormwater, as well as other two wastewater, stormwater, and the Mill Pond Wells 10 and 11, as well as the retirement of a general ban, bond anticipation note from last year. So I'm happy to answer your questions you have. It's just sort of in a nutshell. Oh, I do want to state, though, that we did receive, as you well know, the AAA bond rating was reaffirmed by Standard and Poor's. The town manager and I did have a conversation with them in anticipation of issuing the bond. So we're very pleased with that. Again, S&amp;P said that, you know, the stable economy, very strong management, strong budgetary performance, including growing reserves, manageable direct debt, and our proactive approach in addressing coastal resiliency, were some of the items that they mentioned in the review when they reviewed Chatham for the rating.
Great. Thank you, Alex. Questions or comments from the board? Start down the end of Dean.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alex, I think there's an updating that needs to be done on the legal opinion on, she tells us now, we didn't have to read this. So on page five, at the very bottom on the home rule, refers to the charter. So we had an additional charter amendment that was voted on the on May 11, 2023. It should probably be included, if I'm reading this correctly.
I think that that would to the ballot this past year. So I don't think it was in effect at the time that this was issued. So I can double check on that.
Yeah, just bring that to the attention of your counsel. So and I'm glad my other question. So, and I'm glad, my other question was going to be whether we had to read the whole vote, but you've answered that question.
No.
So, I'm prepared to offer a motion, but Mr. Shell might want to do it.
Mr. Shell.
Well, first, I want to apologize for laughing. I mean, I, you're, Dean, we can always rely on you. I mean, I believe me, you make me much more comfortable with stuff like this, so thank you. I just have two questions. The first one, first of all, congratulations on the AAA bond rating, that's out of sight, really very good. I just wonder, I, you met with them on May 17. Did they, and I think you'll understand why I'm asking you this, were they aware of your retirement plans?
Not at that time, no. They do always ask if there've been any changes in the financial management prior to the rating call, and we stated no, but we did not state that I was retiring at that time, full disclosure.
But it will be disclosed at some point, and we, I can't imagine this will be the case, but I hope that it won't have any, any effect on their opinion, even though it should.
I don't think it will. I hope not, because I hope that we have a good foundation here in Chatham, and our team, our finance team is very strong, we have a very strong treasurer, our assessing department is strong, as well as the Assistant Finance Director slash Assistant Town Accountant. So, you know, we're getting it in place. I tried to give enough time, so we can get somebody in and hopefully have some cross-training moving forward, and find the right person and the right fit for Chatham.
Thank you. And then one last question. There are, there's at least one certificate in here, and then I think there may be two or three, that we, as the Select Board, sort of join you in signing, giving the council and perhaps the underwriters as well, comfort that the facts are as they should be. In all of those certificates, is there anything in the representations that we are, we are signing that gives you any pause?
No, you know, we review these, and Bond Council reviews these as well, but, you know, as I said, they come from Bond Council, I review them, make sure everything is accurate, and I didn't see anything that would cause the Select Board to be concerned.
Good, thank you very much.
Or myself.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple, Alex, the dot plot, if you will, on the ranges of the bids, true interest cost was extremely tight. 3.42 on the low end, and 3.47 on the high end. Any notion as to why that was so tight? I mean, there's eight bids in that range.
I think Chatham is a very desirable town to purchase bonds. You know, again, the AAA bond rating, and just everything that we have, so that's why they're very competitive bids. And again, the true interest cost of 3.422 was great. When we first looked at these, we've always used, I think, about 3.5% when we go out for projections. Now, not knowing what's happening with interest costs, I think for the last town meeting, we were projecting at 5% interest cost, so 3.4 is good.
Yeah, I think I remember talking about 4.5% at one point. The other question I had was, did the premium change at all between bids? Did everybody offer a premium?
Everybody did, and again, that factors into the true interest cost. So the premium for Fidelity is the $672,000. Some of them were higher, but again, once they factor them in and do the parity, you know, and this all goes through the bid process, it was Fidelity that has the lowest true interest cost.
And for the purchaser, they're both exempt from state and federal taxation?
Yes.
Okay. Great investment, by the way.
Okay. Okay, I did say we'd go to the public for any questions or comments. Do we have any hands up?
Mr. Chairman, Elaine Gibbs' hand is up, but I'm not sure if it was up from a previous...
Elaine, do you have a question or comment on this particular agenda item?
No, I don't.
All right, thank you very much. Jeff?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move to award the $7,455,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2023 bonds dated June 22, 2023, the bonds, to Fidelity Capital Markets in accordance with the terms set forth in the attached bid and in the notice of sale dated May 31, 2023, related, relating to the bonds, and as detailed in the attached vote of the Select Board.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Selectboard Member Nacastro?
Aye.
Selectboard Member Davis?
Aye.
Selectboard Member Dykens?
Aye.
Selectboard Member Shell?
Aye.
Selectboard Member Medder says aye. All right, thank you, Alex, very much.
Thank you. I know that Shauna has quite a few signature pages for you, if you can take care of those, as we need to get the bonds back to Bond Council by the, I think, the 20th. So quick, short turnaround on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to Board, Committee, Commission Appointments. We have several in our packet. Anyone want to get this efficiently going?
I'll start, I'll start. Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint David Mallows to the Park and Recreation Commission until June 30, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Do we want to, actually, would we like to, do we, have anyone we want to pull out? Or we want to go right down, right down the slate here?
I, the Water and Advisory Committee I need to pull. I won't be able to vote on one of the appointees, David Davis.
All right, so why don't we remove the Water Advisory Committee? Anyone else need to pull from this list? All right, why don't we read the rest down, and just exclude the Water Advisory Committee, if that's amenable to everybody? We're just going to do one slate.
Okay, all right. Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint, how do you want me to do this? Just read them. To appoint Carol Abel to the Public Ceremonies Committee until June 30, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Rick Jenkins, Jeff Gordon, and Nancy Kerner to the Railroad Museum Group until June 30, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint John Kenaway and Jamie Basset to the Shellfish Advisory Committee until June 30, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Richard Hoyt to the South Coastal Harbor Plan Committee until June 30, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint David Morrison to the Traffic Safety Committee until June 30, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint David Davis and Dick Hosmer to the Waterways Advisory... Oh, I'm sorry, I missed, I got it backwards, sorry. I, Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Debbie Aikman and Bruce Bogardis to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee until June 30, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Selectboard Member Nacastro?
Aye.
Selectboard Member Davis?
Aye.
Selectboard Member Dykens?
Aye.
Selectboard Member Shell?
Aye.
And Selectboard Member Medder says aye. Entertained a motion for the Water Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chair, you'll have to take them one at a time.
Okay, I move...
Okay, I'll finish. Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint David Davis to the Waterways Advisory Committee until June 30, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Selectboard Member Nacastro?
Aye.
Selectboard Member Davis?
Stain.
Selectboard Member Dykens?
Aye.
Selectboard Member Shell?
Aye.
Selectboard Member Medder says aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Dick Hosmer to the Waterways Advisory Committee until June 30, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Selectboard Member Nacastro?
Aye.
Selectboard Member Davis?
Aye.
Selectboard Member Dykens?
Aye.
Selectboard Member Shell?
Aye.
And Selectboard Member Medder says aye. Thank you. All right. This should be a real heavy lift one here. Our Selectboard Member Summer Meeting Schedule. Basically, I think July 4th being a holiday is kind of, kind of factor into some of our scheduling, so I'm just going to throw this, this potential calendar out for consideration, and we can adjust accordingly. So with the 4th falling on a holiday, I suggest that we hold meetings, or schedule meetings, on July 11th, July 25th, August 1st, August 15th, and August 29th. The Summer Residence Town Meeting has been scheduled, well, I guess, potentially scheduled for the 8th of August, so that would be an off night for us. And that's, that's what I'm going to throw up for discussion.
Would you please repeat all of that?
Meeting scheduled for July 11th, July 25th, August 1st, so we've got a back-to-back, August 15th, and August 29th. Any thoughts? Any requests?
It's okay with me.
It's okay with me as well, I'm just trying to think about it. All right, but I don't think we need to take a formal motion, I think that we're going to, well, we're going to schedule that, obviously, if something critical comes up, we have to call a meeting, that's, that's up for, you know, consideration. Or on the, on the other side, if something is just not warranted a full meeting agenda, we can also cancel something if necessary. So I think this is a good guideline for us to have a schedule for the summer. Cool?
Sounds good.
All right. Letter of Support. ARPA Funding for Redevelopment of Cape Cod Five Headquarters Property at 19 West Road, Orleans. Alex, again.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like Alex has logged off, so I think...
Took the 8 million and ran. Kidding, kidding.
7.455.
Sorry, 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 yes.
So if I could, Mr. Chairman, I think that the, the agenda report kind of outlines the request, so they are requesting, Penrose, the developer of the former Cape Cod Five Cent Savings Bank headquarters in Orleans, is requesting a letter of support from the town. Annual Town Meeting of 2022 did vote in support of the town contributing $100,000 of Community Preservation Act funds for the purpose of redeveloping the property as mixed income housing. And so, again, this is a letter of support for a grant that they are pursuing, and we thought we would bring it to the board for action.
All right, well, thank you. I know that some of these requests get criticisms, and people are asking, well, why we want to support it, why we don't want to support it. I think simple, I'm, I am going to support this, but I do think at some point down the road, we're going to be looking for some support, and to show good faith now, hopefully we'll get some return in the future. So as simple as that is my, my thought on this. But questions or comments from the board? Mike?
Yeah, I certainly agree with that. I, I mean, if we have a good relationship and somebody has performed up to standards, I think that it's only appropriate for us to do that. I do have, and now I'll play lawyer, Dean, two suggestions for comments for the, for the letter. In the next to the last, last paragraph, where it says, "We are incredibly excited about," I thought that was just a tiny bit over the top, and I would, I would suggest that that read instead, "We are pleased with this progress." And then my second comment is, in the last paragraph, where they're asking, we're asking, what we want is them to approve, and this is favorably review, I, you know, that, that's what that means, but if I were writing this, I would say, "We ask for your approval and grant of the ARPA application." That's what we're asking for.
All right, additional questions? Jeff?
Totally agree with Mike's edits. I thought the, that was quite effusive there in that second to last paragraph, with their incredible excitement, but listen, the need for mixed income housing knows no regional bounds. We did support this with $100,000 from the CPA funds last year, and I think in good faith, it's a very good move, and I certainly support. And I would move to approve support of its, Penrose's application for ARPA funding from Barnstable County.
All right, do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Additional questions or comments? Actually, I did say we would take public comment on this, I don't see any hands up.
No.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Selectboard Member Nacastro?
Aye.
Selectboard Member Davis?
Aye.
Selectboard Member Dykens?
Aye.
Selectboard Member Shell?
Aye.
Selectboard Member Medder says aye. All right. Now we're going to go on to several housing items. Basically, to calling next steps for housing and sustainable, our Housing and Sustainability Director Gloria McPherson. We have three items. We have the new housing trust makeup, 127 Old Harbor Road, and Stepping Stones Road. Good evening.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, hold on one second. I'm going to summarize the staff report really briefly for anyone who's watching or listening. Really, this is just staff coming before the board, seeking some guidance, and opening up a discussion based on some recent town meeting votes. The three that I've highlighted are the change in the composition of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees, and also the conversion of two town-owned properties from municipal use to housing use, those properties being 127 Old Harbor Road, and also the Stepping Stones Road parcel. And I don't know if you want more of a summary, or if you want to just dive into the discussion?
Dive into it, yep.
Okay.
Please.
Okay, he's calling something else.
Okay. Do you want to start with the discussion about the new composition of the trust?
Yes, please.
I think that that's a good place to start. We submitted the town meeting warrant article to the AG's office. They have up to 90 days to approve it. Once it's approved, it becomes in effect, and then at that point, the Select Board has 60 days to appoint new members to the trust with the new makeup. It brings a couple of questions up. First of all, do you want to get a jump on that process? Do you want to set an agenda item sooner rather than later to start thinking about how you're going to go about advertising and, and starting the process of selecting those members? And then the other overarching question is, given that the trust is going to change, and that there are only going to be two Select Board members represented on it, as opposed to the, the current five, do you want to hold back any of the decision-making and moving forward with certain projects until the new trust is formed?
All right. Thoughts from the board? Mike?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start. I, I mean, I think, first of all, I'm going to start with a really easy one. I, I don't see why we shouldn't advertise and begin that selection, and not selection, recruitment process, and let people know what's going on, and give them an opportunity to register their interest. With respect to deferring decisions, I, I guess I would say, if there is something that is timely, or that could support moving forward, not necessarily at breakneck pace, but, but smartly, I, I don't see, I mean, we've been that board for the duration of the trust, and I, I would, I would say, bring the decision to this board, and we can take that into account if necessary, but let's not slow the train down here, just because there may be a change in something like four to six or eight weeks.
Jeff?
Yeah, I agree. Why wouldn't we move forward? I mean, again, if something so burning came up that we had to make a decision, or you needed direction on which way to go prior to the reconstitution of the trust, then you'd bring it here and we'd weigh in. But I think it's really a good idea to solicit the breadth and depth of interest out in the community, and hopefully we can get some, some talent cooking here on the new trust, on the new reconstituted trust. So I really, I think it's important to get out there early and often, and if you have issues, you bring them back here if the trust isn't constituted yet. I think it's perfect.
Shereen?
I agree. I've already been hearing from people that are expressing, expressing interest into wanting to be part of the, the trust, and I think that we're, it's going to be, you know, it will take some time for us to figure that out, so the sooner we get started, the better.
Dean?
Yes, I'm in full agreement with both points on the, doing anything that needs to be done now, we should do it, and let's start the recruitment process. I don't even think we need to wait the 60 days for the Attorney General to approve it to get, start recruiting people. Okay.
I'm fully supportive of the recruiting, I just have the one question. I agree philosophically that if we can start taking some action, that we do it, but mechanically, the question I have is, say we take a certain action as a board, and obviously, things
and obviously, things don't take overnight action, so they take some time. We get the new trust in place, and they differ in, in the opinion of what we put in action, they would have, they would have authority to change direction if, if that were the, the opinion of the new trust. So we've got to keep that in mind, that it'd be nice for us to kind of keep things rolling, hoping that they'll follow through with our wishes, but just the mechanics, I just want to put out there.
I agree, and I think that's a great point. I, I think that we shouldn't be slowing down any process, but we need to be mindful that, that there could be a shift or a change, and be open to that.
Okay, I think that's fair. Okay. Jeff? I mean, uh, Mike?
Anything you say, Fred. Yeah, I, it, this board has the right to change its mind. I mean.
Oh, yeah.
So, it, it's, I mean, that's the nature of the beast. I, 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 I agree, we should be mindful of that. The, the one point I did want to add is, um, I, I did read the submission that we got from, uh, one of our summer residents who's been involved, Mr. Richardson, Phil Richardson. He ma, he made the comment, I, I'm probably gonna make it sound less diplomatic than he made it, but he did say that, um, he thought that there was a, a dearth of, let's say, experience and knowledge about housing, construction and development in the team that we have together, and, and that we should look for that. And, and I would just mention that comment in encouraging a, a broad and enthusiastic recruitment of talent across the board from, including, I think what he said was, he, we should look for, uh, his word was builders, but developers, whatever, I, I, I would endorse that.
Additional questions or comments? All right, moving on.
Did you want to actually set up another agenda item for the trust so that we could go over some of the criteria that you might want to be looking for before we put it out there, now that you mentioned what Phil said?
We certainly could.
Or do you want us just to move forward with that? I'm happy to develop a whole bunch of.
Or desire?
I don't have any, I, I'm fine with just moving forward. I, I don't think we have to discuss it, and we can, Gloria knows what we're looking for.
That's fine.
Excellent, thank you. So the other, uh, the other part of this is starting to, starting to discuss what the vision is for Stepping Stones Road and Old Harbor Road. They're both similar in that they both were converted from prior municipal uses to housing. They have fewer restrictions on them from an affordability perspective than if the trust had purchased these using affordable housing trust funds. So we're not limited to developing a certain percentage of affordable units versus attainable units. It's a little bit more flexible, and I wanted to start that discussion about what the vision is for that. Bearing in mind, though, that if you want to go beyond a density that would be allowed by zoning, and also bearing in mind that you'd have to change the zoning district from municipal to a residential zone. But if you want to go beyond a, a density that's already allowed by right, that we would have to use forty B, and that would include some affordable units. But it does kind of leave it open to, um, you know, what kind of density are you thinking of? What kind of affordability are you thinking of? And if you want to put forward any additional process, if you remember, we did the test fits for Stepping Stones Road, it's possible to revisit that. Just opening the discussion.
I'll stick my neck out first. I mean, I know I wasn't totally in favor of developing that site for pretty much anything. Obviously, housing is probably the one thing that I couldn't support and I did support. I do, in my, this is strictly my opinion, I think developing it in, in a compatible manner with the existing neighborhood, making it literally an expansion of the neighborhood, because there's residential houses across the street, around the area. So I'm not looking to go complete full-density threshold, in my opinion, but something that's a little more manageable and within balance of the neighborhood to provide housing, but provide that light neighborhood feel for everybody. So that's, that's my opinion.
And this is for both Stepping Stones and one twenty-seven?
Stepping Stone is, is my opinion on, that's for Stepping Stone right now. I'll hold on one twenty-seven.
Okay.
Thoughts, anyone? Dean?
Yeah, I'm kind of with you, Corey, on, on Stepping Stones. We had the test fits, um, we had a lot of comment on it from the board, sort of tweaking it a little bit. I, my recollection is that we had some, some measure of consensus around those particular schemes, and I think we should probably use that as, as a basis for going forward. Thank you.
Questions and comments from the board? Mike?
I'll just say, um, I'm, first of all, I, I endorse what, what, in, in principle, what, what Corey said. But I, at the same time, I'm not sure, I, I guess I would be more comfortable if we had a little bit more of a, um, you know, a little bit more of a menu to look at than, than we have today. And, and that's not to say, I mean, I think that, that property represents a, a very, very important opportunity for us to, um, step out and, and, and do something that, that's significant in the context of what we've done in the past, which, over the last few years, is, is probably not a whole lot. And so I, I'd kind of like to see, do we, are there options that could appeal to this, the sensibility that says, well, I'm, I'm basically biased in favor of, um, of single-family dwellings that, that, that it can, can be acceptable to that, that sensibility that is, that is a little bit denser housing than that. By the same token, I, I, I read carefully the submission that Mr. Richardson sent to us, and he makes a very strong case in a different context for single-family housing. I, I, I took that seriously, so my mind is open on that front as well. But I, I don't really feel as if I've anyway had enough, um, choices just conceptually in front of me to say yea or nay to one or the other.
Shereen?
Thank you, I'm signing, thanks. I agree with Mike, and, and I think that, um, you can do something very tasteful with a little more density there. We are, we don't have land in Chatham, and we really have to be creative with what we're trying to do for housing here. The development across the street is somewhat dense. It's, it's, you know, it's not big-acre lots, houses on big-acre lots by any means, and some of the budding neighbors have very small lots. But I think that there's an opportunity at Stepping Stones to be able to really look at something in a little more denser fashion than, than that. And the single-family dwelling scenario is a great scenario, but I'm not averse to townhouses, um, you know, duplexes and whatnot. So, a variety, an, an, an expansion of what we looked at and what the recommendations and what we saw prior would probably be a good idea for that. As far as one twenty-seven Old Harbor Road is concerned, again, and didn't really vision anything for there. I, at first, I thought that we were looking at, you know, perhaps we, we have an existing building where within a historic district, I believe. Is it historic? It's not, okay. It's not, I'll take that back. So we have an existing really cool building and a barn, and, and they're, I mean, those buildings themselves could probably do, uh, uh, you know, house, you know, some multifamily, um, you know, scenarios there. But again, it's, it's property that we could be looking at to be done tastefully. And, but I wouldn't want to see the house be destroyed. I think that it is, you know, it's a legacy home, and, and we should honor that in some respect. But, um, thinking creatively about what that looks like architecturally for, you know, some multifamily usage.
I did say I would take public comments, I do see one hand on this, oh, sorry. Jeff, and then I'm gonna go to the public.
Thank you. The general rubric for Stepping Stones of tasteful density. I don't mind townhouses also, you know, with a propensity, I guess, or I'd lean towards single-family dwellings, but I don't mind townhouses as well. I think our, our job is to create tasteful housing for as many folks as we can on Stepping Stone, tasteful. And everybody has a different perception of what taste is or isn't, but structures that are compatible with the neighborhood, that's a neighborhood, so we don't want to, you know, building apartment buildings, blah, blah, blah. One twenty-seven Old Harbor, I, I agree with Shereen that we should maintain the integrity of the building as best we can. I also think that we could fit more than one dwelling unit there, probably two dwelling units, perhaps an ADU, I don't know. But, you know, I would like to maximize the density there as well. That's tasteful, I'm not jamming people in there, but that's, that's what we need to do, we need to create housing. I do, I do have one question, rent versus own. Rent versus own. So, just talk to me about rent versus own for a bit.
We'll start with Stepping Stones because.
I don't think you're a number, Mike.
Sorry, it turned off before in case I coughed or something. So, starting with Stepping Stones, what I'm hearing is that everyone likes the look of single-family homes, but you'd also like to see increased density because, you know, we need to take advantage of the property that we actually have to use. So more density. And immediately, I was thinking about a presentation that Habitat did for the Community Housing Partnership last month. They're actually working on kind of a model of a new type of housing that they're gonna construct, zero lot line, which actually means a duplex, so it would share a common wall, but only one. And it's set up in a way that you can divide it with an actual lot line, so this would be an ownership model, tighter and more dense because one of the walls would be combined with the others. So you'd have individual lots, individual ownership, but a little bit more density than just single-family homes. They haven't done any yet, and I think they're still refining it, but as soon as you were talking about that, that's exactly the model that I was thinking there, as a way of getting more density, but still having an ownership model for people to do. And I know that in other habitats, um, this model has worked from a financing perspective and also from a mortgage perspective. So that zero lot line model works for lower-income families to get mortgages on it. So I think that might be a possibility, and we can potentially look at that. I know at one point, I was talking to Mike about the possibility of kind of reconfiguring what Util had done, and maybe we look a little bit more in-depth with this, with the possibility, and this is just an idea, hopefully it's not gonna offend anyone, but potentially moving the bike path off the, off to the street and then using the existing bike path as a driveway. I'm not sure about the grades, I don't know if it's a possibility to like access the lots from the back and then drive up. It's something that would have to be explored. But if you could do that, as opposed to doing the loop road that we did initially, that would all of a sudden gain you some area that could be used for houses, as opposed to street. So I think that there's an opportunity to do a couple more test fits, look at a couple more creative solutions, and then go with the idea of either single-family or those duplexes, the Habitat model, individual lots and ownership. I think that that's a really reasonable way of developing the site. Of all of our sites, from a physical perspective, I think that one lends itself the most to ownership because it is long and narrow, and you can divide a whole bunch of lots off of it. And especially if, um, you know, Habitat is the one who does it, or if, um, you know, you do more attainable housing as opposed to affordable, then ownership can make a lot of sense there. But I'm happy to look into doing more test fits. I have my fingers crossed for getting a grant for the Housing Production Plan update, which should free up some cash that we had already, you know, identified for that. So maybe we can use that for some additional conceptual plans. Katie's smiling because it's the first time I've mentioned this to her. So, I'm already spending money. And regarding one twenty-seven Old Harbor Road, I mean, that one would be, that would be so easy to rezone residential, and because there's about an acre of land, you could rezone it like R twenty, where you only need a half acre of land, do two half-acre parcels, have the house be a house, just renovate it, have the, have the barn be a house, or maybe a house plus an accessory dwelling unit. And those, as individual parcels, could then be, you know, rented or sold as ownership units. That's a really easy way to go about doing one twenty-seven Old Harbor Road. It doesn't give you the density that a bunch of people mentioned about that, and that's another conversation, whether you want to add additional structures to that parcel.
All right. I, I said I'm gonna go to the public for a second, so just take a pause from the board. I'm gonna take a pause, I, I do see a hand up, I don't know if there are wanted to come.
Stephen Buckley?
Stephen? Stephen?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I, uh, I like to, I was gonna make some comments, but it seems like the, um, that you all have, are, are thinking the same way I was thinking, that be able to get more use, higher, the highest and best use possible from the Stepping Stones, at least when you were talking about duplexes. Because I'm looking at the packet that, the memo that you have, that Ms. McPherson prepared, and was talking about four building lots, four dwelling units. And, yeah, so if you can get, uh, four duplexes, of course, you've got four units, I mean, eight then on those lots, and so that's twice as many that you can get. And I'm sure those extra four families will appreciate it immensely. But I do have a question on one sentence here that maybe Ms. McPherson can explain it in her memo. It says, "If the town wants to build more dwelling units, then what would be allowed under current regulations? The projects would have to be done under forty B." So, but what I heard just now doesn't sound like that, or could, could that, she clarify what that was, I, I wonder?
Sure. So a really quick zoning analysis, um, actually, let me start with one twenty-seven Old Harbor. So what I said earlier stands. So if you rezone that municipally-zoned parcel to R twenty, it only requires a half an acre for a unit, and then we would have two lots that each allowed one unit. So that would be kind of like that by-right zoning that's allowed if you did an R zoning, R twenty zone change. As far as Stepping Stones Road goes, there's bedroom limits based on the lot size, and, um, I can't remember, I think I was doing the, I think I was also doing R twenty zoning there too. And basically, the size of that lot would allow you to have approximately four lots. I don't know the exact square footage, I don't think we've ever done a real survey of it, so it could be that it falls like just under and you only get three lots. But a quick zoning analysis shows that you could probably get four buildable lots, each one holding one dwelling unit, and that would be by-right. So if you want anything above and beyond the two lots at one twenty-seven Old Harbor or the potential four lots at Stepping Stones, then you really would have to go into the forty B realm to get more. And at that point, you know, all of zoning could be, um, you know, waived based on how you choose to develop the site. But then the, in, in exchange for waiving zoning, then you have to provide twenty-five percent affordable units, as opposed to attainable.
So the, the structure per lot would be, it could be a duplex?
It could, it could be through forty B, yeah.
But only through?
So the, the model that I was talking about earlier through Habitat is actually, it looks like a duplex, but because you draw a lot line through the middle, it's actually like a single-family home on a single-family lot. But you would still have to do forty B if you wanted more than four of those.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Carolyn McClellan, please.
Thank you. Yeah, so I just wanted to just chime in a little bit and give you my opinion on these two lots. I certainly think that on Stepping Stones, I would love to see a homeownership model there. I'd love it to go up to as high as maybe a hundred percent AMI, maybe a range. But definitely those parameters. I think we have all these other, you know, the Buckley property and the one thirty-seven property, which would be ideal for rentals, that this might be a good opportunity to do the homeownership model at Stepping Stones. I like maximizing the site without, you know, building an apartment building, but if we could get eight homes, I think that would be fabulous. On the one twenty-seven property, I'd also like to see, because we have fewer opportunities for attain- On the 127 property, I'd also like to see, because we have fewer opportunities for attainable housing, I think that would be a good model for, seeing as it's a smaller development, I think you can only get one or, or maybe, excuse me, two to three units on that property. And if you did attainable, and that would be over 100% AMI, or 100% to maybe 120% AMI, and do a homeownership program, I think that would be an ideal opportunity for that there. And I don't see a lot of other opportunities in the other housing we have on the table to do that. And I think that would be, I think the neighbors might appreciate that more, and I think we could get a really, a beautiful property and some housing in there. And I really would like to do those two properties as homeownership rather than rental. And that's all, all I have to say about those two properties. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Rick Levitt, please.
Thank you. The, I think the most important thing that has come out of this discussion here tonight about 127 and Stepping Stones is you need to maximize the number of units, and you also need to mix the income levels, both of so-called affordable, which is below, below the average median income, and attainable, which is above the average median income. The planning board currently is working on changing zoning in West Chatham, just West Chatham Village Center, towards a density of something like 10 dwelling units, homes, whether they're apartments, whether they're single homes, whether they're townhouses, it doesn't matter. They're working on a project that will get 10 dwelling units, 10 homes on an acre. And I think that this is what you need to focus on with respect to this wonderful property on Stepping Stones Road, which is almost two acres, and the 127 Old Harbor Road property, which is, was a, is an acre. It would be a mistake if, if we give, just give up the opportunity to create a demonstration project for this town, as how we can bring affordable and so-called attainable housing to the town. The, by far, Chatham's greatest need is housing for moderate-income working households priced out of the market today. So you need to have a mixed income projects at 127 Old Harbor, at Stepping Stones Road. And we're going to get into here shortly, the Buckley property and the Meeting House Road property. They need to be mixed-income housing developments at a density level that can be sustained in this town and be very attractive. So I, I, I just hope you won't get off the track here. We're looking for higher density, moderate density, that will provide housing for moderate-income households and lower-income households, mixed together. This is the focus that I encourage you to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. I don't believe there's any other hands up. All right, so back to the board. Shereen, please.
Thank you.
I'm Phil Richardson.
Actually, Phil, just go up to the podium, please.
I don't usually do this, but here I am, and I've been concerned about housing in Chatham well for at least four or five years. And I talked to Gloria today, and it's, you should be very glad you hired Gloria because she's going to be doing a very good job for you. And, and, but I have some ideas, and I, we're probably thinking the same thing, for these two properties, I, I, Stepping Stone, it's two acres, and I haven't been out there to look, but could we get the best two acres, have somebody go out and do a layout and get the best two acres? Right now, it's a, two acres defined by the bicycle path, and I don't know if that's the best two acres. But if the school district doesn't need the property, if we could find the best two acres there from a development standpoint, that's what I would try to do there. And then, 147, 127, 147, I forget the number, the one on Old Harbor, I told Gloria that I'd like to develop that. And I, I, I think, okay, interestingly, I built a project in San Francisco, single-family dwellings, townhouses, but they're not, they're single-family units, and the density is 76 units an acre, which would, I'm sure, frighten everybody to death. But there's, it's full of young people, and when they get children, they move out, but it's really great. And we built them in, in 2002,000, and they sold for $200,000, which is, sounds crazy here, but that, and now they're worth a lot more. But there's nothing wrong with density if it's done right. I work for a famous developer out there, says, oh boy, I won't forget, it's not how dense you make it, but it's how you make it dense. So I'm definitely an advocate for, for density, and I also think that we talk about other styles, but single fam, the, the whole Cape is single-family houses, so why we are drifting away from single-family houses, I'm not sure. Because single-family houses can be done as dense as townhouses. Now, if you want to do, Gloria and I talked about this, when you get to the, the other, other units where they want to do rental, then that's going to be a different building style. And that's the only other question I, you're going to address tonight, maybe Gloria, is how much rental and how much for sale housing? And I don't know if anybody has any idea about that, but that's another real big question. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. All right, back to the board. Mike, I guess. Oh, well, you deferred to him, so just take, step up, please.
Yes.
He's got his hand going like this.
All right, never mind.
Don't be shy.
Gloria, I just had a quick question for you. On 127, and you talk about the 40B process, and Carolyn, everybody's mentioned, and I had mentioned previous, you know, maintaining the house and the barn as a structure, but is there a way that that house could be expanded and become multifamily, even as a, units that are bought, you know, multi-level, multi-family? If we're looking at it as a homeownership, then, you know, could it be small, one-bedroom units within those structures, or the structure gets expanded a lot? It still looks the same, but it, it ends up having more bang for the buck. Because we're, I think, for us, we, as we're looking at, I mean, keeping in mind, it is, you know, an older neighborhood and, and where it is, but, you know, old Greek revivals are fairly large houses with high ceilings, and there's a lot of space in them. And the barn itself could be really cleverly, you know, done to, to afford something like that as a, as a structure.
So I think, as a model from a physical perspective, that's a great way to go about developing. From a financing perspective, especially if you're talking about homeownership as opposed to rental, it's really difficult to get like an FHA mortgage on an affordable condo. Like you really, it's really not something that is likely to happen. So if you want to do homeownership, it makes sense to have that kind of individual lot, whether it's through that zero lot line kind of development, or whether it's a, a small single-family home. So that's the most practical from a homeownership perspective.
So if we wanted to get our most bang for the buck, and we're a little nervous about Phil's recommendation for 76 homes on a, on an acre in that neighborhood, would it be better if we start to look at 127 as a rental property?
I mean, you could look at any of these as rentals. So there's a, there's a drastic need for rentals. If you're talking about maintaining the house and potentially adding units to it, then I think that it does make more sense from a financing perspective to be a rental. And so I'm going to throw another little bit of a financing picture at you. So when you do rental projects, there are a lot more, rental and affordable rental projects, there are a lot more funding sources available, including low-income tax credits. So at the state level, in order to access those tax credits, you need a minimum of eight units that are at that affordable level. So you can have additional units that are market rate or attainable, but you need eight, like the actual number eight, to access low-income tax credit. So if we talk about 40B, we're talking about rentals, and if you want to be able to access low-income tax credits, you're talking about a minimum of eight affordable units.
The reason why I'm saying this is because as we see people purchase property in Chatham, single homes and whatnot, they're expanding them out to be very large structures. So if this building was bought by somebody else, it would have been expand, it probably would have been expanded into a larger structure. So it would probably be keeping in to what the trends are for, for the community.
I mean, realistically, it probably would be, be torn down.
Well, I understand that, but something larger would go up there.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, that's a really, that's a really nice model to think about, and I think that there are a lot of examples out there of, you know, condominiums that have been converted from, you know, large old houses. Obviously, this is small, so you'd have to add on to it, but I think that that's a, that's a, a potential option. But at that point, it would be like, like I mentioned earlier, much more difficult to get mortgages for homeownership.
Thank you. I'm Donna.
I know, well, you were ready to go, so, like...
Well, you have something to say?
No, no, I'll, I guess, I guess I'll have to say, trust.
So I'm going to get a little bit far out over my skis here, Mr. Richardson. To me, the, the reason for, for multifamily is why, why you have to think about it, notwithstanding whatever people are doing here in the Cape, is, is basically environmental and energy and efficiency of, and ultimately, cost of, of construction. And that's, that's a factor that I think we, we need to take into account. I'm not saying that dictates any particular result, but obviously, multifamily, I say obviously, I believe multifamily is, is cheaper from those perspectives than single-family. So just put that to one side. I, I'm a, I have a bias in favor of rental for the simple reason that I, you know, I, I think about, I mean, let's pick a number that's probably ridiculous in terms of what, at the low end, you know, somebody needs to assemble in the way of, of price to, to, to buy an affordable house. And it's probably, you know, at a minimum, a couple hundred thousand dollars, and probably more than that. For people who are in the 20 to 30-year-old range, who are working in the jobs that we want to keep here, and we want to keep the people here, that, that's a, that, that, that could be a bridge too far. And so I'm thinking, you know, I, I, I think about rental as being a beginning place for somebody to start out a life and, and begin to accumulate the kind of money that they might be able to use to buy a house, but not the first, first shot out of the box. And if we're talking purchase-only, ownership-only, or predominantly ownership, my sense is that that group, that younger group is, we're, we're not thinking as much about them as we need to be.
Thank you, Mr. Matters. I agree with Mr. Shell. We're, we're, we're aiming to provide housing for folks that hopefully will work here or work in the neighboring town, or, and typically, you know, they can't afford the down for what a market, you know, marketplace house costs here, whether it's a townhome or whether, you know. So I really think, I really like what Mike had to say, and that's why I initially asked, what do you feel about rent versus own? Because I think if we're really going to hit the sweet spot of providing housing here in Chatham, a good complement, a good percentage of it's got to be rental. Now, it can be attractive rental, but, but to really provide affordable housing, attainable, affordable housing to folks that work here, want to live here, and get a start here, as Mike noted, and maybe put some money away so that they actually do have a down at some point, I think, I think a good percent, I don't know, but I think a good percentage is going to have to be rental. That doesn't mean it can't be single-family, it doesn't mean it can't be townhouses, it can't be, I mean, it can't be, you know, attractive. And, and, you know, that's, that's what I think, so. And I think at some point, density is, if we're going to provide housing, and we have land, now, we have to think about increased density. It doesn't have to be unbelievably packed, but we have to think about increased density if we're going to provide housing. So that, those are my thoughts, and, and I do think rentals have to be a considerable piece of it. Thanks.
Well, I mean, I would put it out there. I mean, obviously, density is a concern of mine, but we have, maybe the luxury is probably not the right term to use, but we have several projects on our plate that we have the ability to do rental and homeownership in potentially different designs to meet our long-term goals. So it's not like we just have one option on the plate. We have four significant projects that we are going to balance and control and, and plan for to, to, you know, achieve all, all our desires. So I, I do think that's, that's a nice little thing to have. It's a, it's a good problem to have.
It is, Corey, just for a second, I agree with you. We do have options, thankfully, we have options. And I, but I think the, the road for financing for development may be a little easier on the rental, rental side than on the ownership side, that's all. I think, I think it's worth, we have to really keep our minds open for all, all different models.
I think that, so, the RFI is going to come in, in the next, like, week or so, and we'll get more information. But realistically, I think that Meeting House Road is going to end up being rental because that's where all the financing is. It has to be affordable. It doesn't make sense to build affordable homeownership on that site when it's very difficult to, like, get financing for homeownership, and we already have that requirement. I just see that as the most attractive to developers as a, an affordable rental project. So Buckley is likely to be affordable rentals also, right? Because we have a, we have a affordability requirement for half of it because of Affordable Housing Trust funds that were used to, to purchase it. I think that realistically, if some homeownership there is important to the board, it would be possible to kind of peel off a part of that and maybe do, you know, a project that's a part rental and part homeownership, probably two different developers, because most developers either do homeownership or they do rentals. It's really uncommon to find someone who's going to do a big project with a mix of homeownership and rentals. The financing for that's a nightmare. And also, getting back to what I said about mortgages, I mean, you really do have to have your own separate lot. You can't be like a few homeownership units spread throughout a rental project. You would never be able to get mortgages for that. It's just, it's just not the way housing development is done. So I think that we have great opportunity for rental projects. Anytime you do affordable as opposed to attainable or that middle income, it's more feasible to do that. When you start doing smaller-scale things, then you can start thinking about homeownership and everything. And actually, I was thinking more about Shereen's original question about 127 Old Harbor. And so my mind is going through all of these, like, site planning exercises. And actually, I think that, so bear in mind, you can always split those into two separate lots. So if you want to do homeownership, you can peel off either the barn or the house and do homeownership for that. But now that I'm thinking about the way the house faces the street and where it lays on the lot, I'm wondering if, when you think about doing multiple units, if you think about adding like a wing on one side and a wing on another, then you really might have that option of doing a few individual homeownership lots. It really depends how you lay it out and how you design it. So yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of options. But I think that realistically, and I don't want to say for sure because we don't have all the RFI answers back, but realistically, I think we're going to get rental projects for Meeting House Road and the Buckley property at 1533 Main Street, just because it's the model that's going to work, that's going to really be able to be financed.
Dean?
Yeah, thank you, Corey. When Carolyn McClellan spoke earlier about both Stepping Stones and 127, she was advocating for ownership with relatively modest density, as I understood what she said. So, and she's still going, I think she has, she has her hand up. Curious is to know what her rationale is for that. Curious is to know what her rationale is for that, because it had an appeal to me.
Carolyn, would you like to respond to that?
I'd be happy to, sure. I just think that we need a mix in the town. And Gloria can speak, as she already mentioned, how difficult it is for a developer to develop rentals and homeownership on the same project. So, these are two of our smaller developments. So, since we've got a lot of, we're probably going to end up with a lot of rentals on the other two, and they fit the site better, then why not do a little homeownership opportunity here? If we did an affordable, capital A, homeownership on the Stepping Stone, get it as dense as possible, whether it's a zero lot line, maybe eight houses, but also on the 127 property. I know Gloria mentioned how hard it is to get funding if it's all in one building. But if you did attainable, I don't understand why you couldn't build out the 127, the, the main house, maybe put two units in there and sell them as condos. And if it's attainable, they're not getting the, the USDA mortgage, they're just getting a conventional mortgage, and they're paying three or $400,000 for the unit, and it's attainable unit. And then, the other thing I did want to mention while I'm on, is that if you people think that, sorry, if you guys are under the impression that renting is cheaper than buying when you're talking about affordable housing, that is inaccurate. A four, Habitat mortgage is about $800 a month. And if you rent at like Lake Street or any of these other units, a three-bedroom unit might be 1200 or 1400 a month. So, actually, when you're talking about capital A, homeownership is a cheaper opportunity. It's an opportunity to build wealth, even though they can't resell it and make, you know, a lot of money on it, they still, they're getting their investment back. It's like a piggy bank. They can sell and get the money they put into it back. Rental has nothing to do with that. You're just paying rent. If your income goes up, so does your rent. So, I'm, I'm a homeownership advocate. Whenever it's possible, it's not always possible, but when we have those opportunities, I'd like to take advantage of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
The condo idea is interesting. We actually have a property in our neighborhood that Mr. Marsh developed that had a, a barn, it was a loft, a barn, and occupied mostly by foxes. But it's now, I think he condoized the property. This is 11 and 15 Shattuck Place. But thank you, Carolyn, for, Caroline, for, for that explanation. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, Elaine Gibbs has her hand up.
Elaine, please.
Yes, thank you. I just have some questions here, the rentals versus homeownership. Assuming you do rentals, who, who owns the land? Does the Affordable Housing Trust own the land? And are we, the mortgage holders, are we the, do we pay the property taxes? I, I assume as a renter, there's no property tax. So, who pays it, or is it, is there no property tax paid? And if somebody buys a unit, if we make them ownership, again, is, do we own the land still? Or does the individual own the land that it's built on? I'm, I'm confused about the ownership and if we become landlords for the properties, because some you said there has to be a zoning bylaw to turn them into R20s, but then others, I assume, would remain municipal if they're rental properties. So, I'm just confused about how that all works.
I'm happy to take that up. So, the goal is for the town to never become a landlord. Typically, for a homeownership project, it is exactly what it sounds like. So, we will create lots. They might be substandard lots that you can get through 40B, but they'll be individual lots with their own deed and their own ownership, and we would sell that to the, the homeowner. It would go through some sort of a lottery system, so it's fair. It's not just put on the open market. But it would not, the town would not retain ownership of those lots. So, for a rental project and an affordable rental project, there's a couple ways you can do it. The town can give the land to the developer and have them do it, and then actually maintain the project. The town can do a 99-year land lease to the developer, but the goal of that would be that the developer would still be responsible for maintenance and upkeep and paying off the mortgage that they take out and everything like that. And there are a couple of towns that sometimes get like a little nominal fee back for their land from the developer, like $50,000 or something like that. So, we could like sell the land to the developer, too. But in, in no circumstance will the town take on the responsibilities of being a landlord and doing property maintenance.
Thank you. Final thoughts? Okay, are we good?
Can I ask one specific question? For Old Harbor, 127 Old Harbor Road, are we talking about only maintaining the house and the barn with potential additions? Or are you talking about potentially adding additional structures on that site?
Hold on. All right, go ahead.
Go.
Go.
I don't think that we really are equipped to answer that question. I mean, I will tell you, I, I have two thoughts for you. The first one is that, in spite of my enthusiasm for getting the approval to dedicate it to affordable, attainable workforce housing, which happily we successfully did, I, I am sensitive to the fact that, that occupies a unique place, or if not a unique place, at least a special place, both by way of location and in the community mind in terms of development. So, that, I think, ought to go into the thinking. In terms of, of the fixing, you know, one or more, whatever, I, I don't see that, I see that as essentially likely two dwelling structures, plus, as you've said, possibly an ADU. But I would really like somebody who knows what they're talking about to tell us, these are your options, and here's why you might think about this or that or the other. I've had one person tell me who's been in the house that they don't really think the house is salvageable. Now, I don't know whether that's a good or bad, or whatever biased opinion, but I think it's something that, again, we're not equipped really to make that judgment.
Nicole Stern.
Actually, we have one more guest on the, Nicole?
Hello.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. I have a question about the housing that Gloria spoke of that has a common wall but is owned fee simple. Did I get that right, this new concept that you, that you mentioned?
So, that is right.
Is that sounding familiar?
Yeah, so it's a new concept for Habitat, but it's like zero lot line developments have a, a long history. Not, not in Chatham, but elsewhere.
Right. I have some knowledge of that. And my question is, because it's individually owned, will or can there be any type of restrictions where one side will have a different roof or paint a different color, and the other side can choose to do what they, they please? And I've seen that in other states. So, that's my question. Is there any discretion over that? Or because it's own fee simple, they can do whatever they want?
I guess it really depends if a homeowners association is formed and if there are homeowners' rules and regulations. It might make sense, so for instance, on the Stepping Stones Road property, if we do a model that we looked at, actually, at the end of last year with kind of a loop drive, a homeowners association actually would have to be formed because somehow they'd have to, you know, agree on common maintenance of that area and everything. And whether restrictions on paint color and, and things like that are added into it, I, I don't know. It's a little bit premature for me to, to comment on that. But in general, maintenance is the responsibility of the homeowner. And when you build units like that, there's actually like a fire separation wall, and there's entirely different building code standards for that.
Thank you. I understand that, but from the ones that I'm familiar with, they don't necessarily have homeowners associations. They're just considered independent, single-family, fee simple, but they are attached by a common wall. And as you mentioned, it's not like condominium where you're attached by a condom living wall. You could be attached just by a garage. So, it's a little bit different. I was just trying to picture that on Old Harbor Road, I guess, or, or even on Stepping Stone, and I just wondered about that. I think that's kind of important. Do you agree?
You mean the maintenance responsibilities of each half of the zero lot line house?
The fact that each half, that if there is no condominium involved, and there doesn't have to be, can each half treat their, their residents separately, even though they are attached, so that you'd be looking at two units with two different roofs unless they got together and they liked each other? But if they didn't, well, we have examples of that right here in Chatham.
Yeah, no, I know what you mean. So, realistically, it wouldn't be two separate roofs because the roof would be constructed by the developer at the same time. But unless there were restrictions or a homeowners association with bylaws, yeah, the homeowners own it. They can paint their window sashes whatever color they want. One side could be, you know, green, the other side could be purple, and, yeah.
Okay, thank you. You answered my question. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Nicole. All right, I think we've covered everything. We're ready to maybe adjourn this select board meeting and go to the Affordable Housing Trust. Entertained motion?
So moved.
Second, okay. Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
Select Board Member Matters says aye. Do we have, I know Megan was not available. Do we have Bruce online by any chance?
I didn't see him.
I don't see him.
I didn't see him.
All right, so, the five of us will be acting as the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yep.
Going to take a roll? Please. Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens. Select Board Member Shell. And Select Board Member Matters as the Affordable Housing Trust. All right. 127 Old Harbor Road.
Oh, okay. So, this is actually, so as you know, I've, I've been here less than a year, but you guys have been looking at Old Harbor Road for years and years about how you could possibly reuse it and what its uses could be. And it's currently used for storage by various town departments. It was the former home of the water department. But way back in 2021, before there was a vote taken to convert the use, the Affordable Housing Trust actually voted to allocate $50,000 of trust funds for a feasibility study for old, for 127 Old Harbor Road. And I am asking the board or the trustees to reaffirm that expenditure of trust funds so that we can look into the structural stability of the house and any potential development options that we may have.
I'm going to start. I wonder, I know, I know I'm going to be in the minority. I have a little concern on this because mechanically, this is something we should have done before we brought it to town meeting on multiple occasions. And, you know, it came back and came back, came back, and it finally passed. So, I, I, I don't think we should spend the $50,000. We've, it's made the town meeting vote, it's supported. We're going to move forward with some element of it. I, I, I think adding this is, is kind of, you know, is an action that we should have taken prior to bringing it forward to town meeting. So, I think we're just, procedurally, it's, it's not appropriate, and it's not something I'm going to support, so. Jeff?
Why would we have brought it if we didn't know we could use it?
Because we wanted to find out the full extent of, there was the philosophy behind it, figure out how structurally sound it was.
No, but if we didn't have permission to do it, why would we expend the money?
This is my thoughts. I'm not, I've never been an advocate of this property, but town meeting has spoken, and we're going to move forward with it, but.
I, I know, but, okay. Just mechanically, I just wouldn't understand why we would bring this forward and ask for the money if we, if we couldn't do it.
I think we, I think the philosophy behind spending the-
The money in the back pocket?
I think spending the $50,000 to figure out structurally the, the soundness of it is, we've had anecdotal opinions of people saying it's, it's a tear down. Like, this is, that's the stuff we should have found out to figure exactly what the extent of and what our vision was. But it's more of a philosophical question, so. I know we're going to get trained.
Katie, you were trying, you were going to say something, and I didn't know.
No, I'm just saying, I, I-
No, I ask, Mr. Chair, I'm asking Katie if, if you can expound on how, how we came about.
Sure. So, so conversation, as the conversations ensued leading up to town meeting, it was just decided that it would be irresponsible to spend $50,000 out of our trust without knowing whether or not town meeting would actually vote to authorize the, the property for disposition. And so, we had decided at that point in time that we would hold on moving forward with the, with doing a feasibility study at that point in time, because it didn't, it didn't make sense. Because if we take this $50,000 from the trust, we have to at least use a portion of this property for affordable housing. Not knowing what direction we were going in, it was a fiscally responsible decision to not spend those funds at that, you know, until we knew town meeting would approve it. And that's why we were bringing it back for reconsideration. And that's why we felt it was important to come back and ask to reaffirm the vote as opposed to just going back and spending it, although the trust and a, a previous trust had approved the funds to be utilized for a feasibility study.
Will at some point, may I continue, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
With, at some point, will we need to get a better understanding of the structural integrity of the building, correct?
Absolutely.
But we can get a funding source from someplace else? All right, based on what you're saying, because I think we still need to do that, I would, I'm not going to approve using Affordable Housing Trust fund money because we don't know what direction we're going with this property. I think that that's the best way to, to, for, for me to, to think about it.
Agreed. Dean?
Yeah, I mean, a couple of points. Obviously, I was opposed to this, but town meeting has voted and voted handily, so we're going forward with it, as you're saying, Mr. Chairman. I had advocated, I don't want to relitigate this, but I had advocated a feasibility study as the appropriate, best, best and appropriate use of the property. And I, I, I had the understanding we were going to do that. That was never done. And I guess this is consistent with, with what Shereen was saying. If we take the money out of the Affordable Housing Trust, we can only use it for affordable housing.
At least a portion, right.
Yeah, and, and that's not consistent with what we were just talking about.
Right, right.
You know, Carolyn McClellan, I agree with her. Talking about ownership by 100%, even 120%, she said, which would sort of be directed at workforce housing, I think. So, I don't see how we can take this money unless we're going to be agreeable to some limitation on it. So, I guess I'm reluctant to, to reaffirm the use of this mon, this money. You had talked, Katie, in the past of, I think we had tried to get some sort of grant funding, and that, that didn't happen.
That's correct. We, we had applied for a grant to look at a feasibility study, not about, not specific to housing, but just what would be the highest investors of the property, and we did not get that grant.
But if we were to take this, this $50,000, do a, do a study, a feasibility study, look at the structure and so forth, and then conclude, oh, we're going to use it all, we're going to use this property only for attainable, will we have violated some process?
Yes, and that's, and that's, again, why we have, you know, this, coming back to the trust to have this conversation, because we want-
So, so if we don't do this, don't agree to this, how do we go about doing a structural study? Do we have funds for it?
No, we'll have to identify another funding source.
Well, I think we should probably look in that direction. That's, that's where my mind is coming from.
Jeff?
Yeah, I think it locks us into affordable. We're not certain we're going to do that yet. Thanks.
I, I'm flabbergasted. I cannot believe that we get to this point and, and we, we cannot spend some money to figure out what to do with this. And if we spend $50,000 out of the trust, I would like a lawyer to tell me that there is no way that we can undo that, whether the town puts the 50 grand back- is no way that we can undo that, whether the town puts the 50 grand back into the affordable trust or whatever. But you can't tell me that spending dollar one, if it's 25, does that mean we're okay? But 50 is not? I mean, dollar one out of the affordable trust means that we can't do anything but affordable trust? I think that's ridiculous. And to be honest with you, I mean, this is endemic of, emblematic, pardon me, of what our problems are with doing this. I mean, there has got to be a way that if not tonight, next week, we can say we're going to move forward with some kind of a professional expert look at what we can do with this property, given that we've asked the town to approve it and we got the approval and affordable is among the possibilities. I'm just, I'm flabbergasted.
Yeah, I echo Mike's sentiment. I mean, I just didn't want to get locked into affordable versus attainable. However, I can't believe that we can't send our building inspector over to take a look. I mean, can't we ascertain as a town whether or not that we own the property? We've been using it for years. How can we not know whether or not it's reusable or what kind of condition it's in? And if we did spend 50 or 25 or some amount and the overall project turned out to be 500, you're going to tell me that, you know, 10% is going to have to be affordable and 90% is going to be attainable? Come on. So there's got to be some legal redress, as Mike just noted, to figure it out. I don't know. So, you know. I don't want to, I don't want to vote in this tonight, to be honest with you. I really don't.
I'm happy to follow up with town council.
Really don't want to vote on this tonight.
I really would like to have a whole menu of options that if we take 50 grand out, and I'd also like to know, find another, let's find another source, if that's what we need, next week. Not next month or next year, but let's find another source if that's a better option. And otherwise, if we spend it out of the trust, what are our options to go back and pay it from some other source, including a development source when we get around to deciding what we're actually going to do with the property?
Ditto.
All right. Safe to say we're going to defer to this.
Okay.
It's fine. No, it's fine. It's fine. I have no problem with that. All right.
Hello.
Oh, Caroline, sorry. Caroline?
Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to jump in, but I did want to ask a couple of questions about this. One, my understanding is the trust can manage funds for properties up to 110% AMI. Of course, the CPC funding only goes to 100% AMI. So my question is, is all the money in the housing trust from the CPC fund? And if not, would that be an avenue at least to get it up to 110%? That's just a question.
I think the majority of the trust funds are CPC funds.
Not short-term rental tax or anything like that that's in there at this point?
Nothing in the, it's not in the affordable housing trust. However, there are some other funds and we can look at that as well, again, because, you know, if we are looking at developing this up to 100% AMI, then we can use trust funds and CPC funds, so.
All right, so just as a note, that even with the way the trust fund is, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is funded at this point, you can develop up to 100% AMI. And we think, normally think a capital A is 80 or below. I just want to make sure everybody understands it's all the way up to 100%, which we still would like to go push a little bit higher, but that is the ceiling. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we're going to refer to action on this. Let's move on to an update on the community engagement process for the Main Street and Meeting House Road projects.
So, sorry. Update on community engagement process for Main Street and Meeting House Road. We have issued an RFI, a request for information, to six known developers of affordable housing on the Cape. It was the Community Development Partnership, POA, Preservation of Affordable Housing, Habitat, Hack, Rob Brennan, who's this? Oh, and Penrose, which is doing the Cape Cod Five Project in Orleans. Heard back from five out of the six. And two are doing a joint project, that would be POA and CDP, so they're going to be answering the RFI together. And I've had a couple of site visits, so we're definitely going to be getting some responses next week. I'll be able to compile them and put them together for you. And then we can talk about feasibility, specifically financial feasibility, and what makes the most sense as we start thinking about those preferred concept plans for those properties. Because I know that the message that I got at the April 11th meeting was, we want to see a mix of townhouses and single-family homes. That featured in the RFI. It was put out there that this was the kind of preferred development concept. We'll see what comes back. I've already gotten a little bit of pushback for that from developers, although one in particular said what I said earlier, which is like, well, if it's really important to the town, then maybe we just peel off a part of the, you know, property and let someone else do that. But we'll see what happens. I'll be able to compile those results and hopefully within the next few weeks, certainly within the next month, we'll come back and we'll talk about what they had to say about the development of the projects. And then we can go from there on that.
Mr. Chairman, who's Brennan? I hadn't heard that name.
So Rob Brennan's the only one who I haven't heard back from. He did see Captain's Row in Hyannis.
Okay. Just this one comment I want to make, and I don't want a response for this, but basically, I know as we're going through the process, I do hope that we're also along, whether it be to a town council or whatever advisors we're working with, make sure we have some answers to the concerns of the neighboring Butters with some of that access road concerns that were brought up in some of the public, you know, input. I know that's concerned some people, so hopefully we're coming up with some better answers or responses on how to address that, so.
So, our DPW director and I met on site a couple of times, actually, to get like the lay of the land and understand the property and how that old discontinued road was used. And we actually had a meeting with the Butters on May 25th, mostly so that we could understand what they, what was really important to them about this. We threw out a bunch of options about like, oh, if we put this, you know, an access road to the upland, the buildable upland part of the site, you know, would you want your driveway access off of that? Would you want this? And the thing that I was the most afraid of was that we were going to have two Butters with two entirely different, like, ideas of what they wanted. And that was not the case. They were really in sync with what they wanted. I think that having been out there a few times with Rob and talking with the Butters, I didn't get the sense from an engineering perspective from Rob that what they were asking for was something that couldn't be done. Basically, I mean, really in a nutshell, they want to maintain the privacy of their existing vegetation, so they don't want a lot of, like, filling and clear cutting. And they want separate access from the new housing. I think it's all reasonable.
Good.
You know, it doesn't, it doesn't strike me as anything that, you know, anyone wouldn't want. So, yeah, and we're just going to keep working with them. And obviously, as we start coming up with more conceptual plans and everything, we can show them to them and make sure that it's, you know, it makes sense for what they want. And the other thing that I wanted to add is that I put in for a site readiness grant with, I think it's a mass development grant. It is a mass development grant. And the purpose of that grant application was to be able to hire a consultant to do the design and engineering of the access road to the Meeting House, Meeting House Road parcel. And a large part of the grant narrative that I worked in was specifically about outreach and working with the Butters and understanding that they have, you know, they've used this road, they have access off of it, and that we need to maintain that and actually improve it and improve the intersection of their access with Meeting House Road, so it's at a safer angle and things like that. So, again, fingers crossed for that grant, because that would be really helpful if we could work with a design and engineering firm to work with the Butters and also work on the access to the site.
Good. Thank you. Questions for the board?
No, Mike was first.
It's not a question. I just wanted to say to Dean, I do know Rob Brennan. He's a lawyer who did a number of, I don't know how many, and I don't know how much they were affordable, you know, housing-type developments, but a bunch of developments on the Cape. And he's affiliated in some fashion with Hack. And now he's sort of, I think, gone back primarily to lawyering, but he's still working closely with Hack. So I would think if he were willing to answer, he could give us some good input.
One other little update, I don't think I.
Very quick one, Gloria. The folks that, the outfit that did the Brewster development and also the Dennis development, are they, were they involved in this RFI or had the possibility to be, should they be interested?
I believe that those were private developers that did 40Bs and not necessarily strictly affordable housing developers.
Okay, thank you.
And the other thing I was going to add, way back on that April 11th meeting, you had asked the consultants to give you more parsed-out data from the survey that was, you know, from the month before. And they've actually compiled that and we're just waiting for a time to put it on the agenda. We didn't feel it was appropriate tonight because of the length of the meeting and the discussion items. But at some point, we'll have Alexis come back and talk about all of the more detailed survey data that you requested.
Final thoughts?
Rick has his hand up.
Rick, Rick Levitt?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to correct what was just said. The Brewster and Dennis Landing projects were done by a private developer, but they were mixed income. It was both affordable and attainable. As a matter of fact, 25% of the units built in both Brewster and in Dennis were just attainable and sold for around $200,000. The others were sold at market rates, somewhere in the $500,000 to $600,000 range. And that is the model that I believe is most important for us to pursue, particularly in the Meeting House Road and Buckley Properties, but also on the 127 Old Harbor and the Stepping Stone Road properties. The, I think the most important thing that's being overlooked here tonight is that all of these developments should be mixed income, not just low income or lower income housing or, well, not just lower income housing. It should be mixed income housing, each of the developments. It's so important because if you don't have it, you get what you get in Lake Street, which we've had here now since 2007, which is really not appropriate for Chatham. So I encourage you to, and there's been a lot of discussion here tonight, you get down into the weeds and a lot of these things. I think you need to elevate the discussion to what you want. My most important thought is that the, Chatham's greatest need is housing for moderate-income working households that are priced out of today's housing market. And I think we need to be focused on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. All right. Should we move on to our last item? Update on the housing production plan?
I'm going to keep this really brief because it's late. So our housing production plan needs to be updated. It was last done in 2018. They have a five-year horizon, so 2023 it is. We were ready to issue an RFQ for consultant services to do this. We cobbled together some funds. And literally the day before I was ready to issue it, the state announced that there was additional funding that was being added to the community planning grant program specifically for housing production. So we kind of regrouped, we expanded the scope, we put in a much more robust community outreach component to the scope and put in the application for that. So hopefully we'll get grant funding for that and we'll be able to move forward with it. I think it'll set our timeframe back a little bit, maybe by like a month or two the most, but I think that ultimately we'll get a much better product. I think that originally the funding that we were working with at the town was 30,000 and we put in a grant for like 65,000. So we'll be able to focus a little bit more on that attainable housing component too, which was completely lacking from the last housing production plan.
Oh, nice. Good.
Just a quick question. You said that it might be set back a month or two. What was the dates that the grant were?
So, it's interesting. So we should hear about the site readiness grant in the fall, but because there's this additional funding that was available, we got an email saying that we were eligible for that with our housing production plan grant, provided that we could go to contract by the end of the month. Obviously, we emailed back and said, yeah, we're ready to go. We're ready to issue. We can definitely do that. So hopefully we'll hear back soon, like any day now.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks.
Additional questions, comments? Good. Full discussion tonight. Thank you very much for all those updates. With that being said, one more motion tonight?
I'll move that we adjourn the meeting.
Here, a second.
Second.
Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
Select Board Member Metters. Good night, everyone.
Night, Chatham.